Good morning, everyone. I'm calling this meeting of the year, first meeting of our year, to order and ask that you stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to our Texas flag. Do I have a volunteer for invocation this morning?
Uh-huh.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for today, for this new year, for new opportunities to put 2020 behind us, but to know that we are still in the reality of a pandemic and to serving the needs of our community. We pray for your grace today that it be on us as servants of the people, that we put their needs, their requests for this good service from these elected officials first and foremost. And so, God, we just ask for that. We ask just to put all of our own personal agendas aside and do what's best for Nueces County. And we just pray today, Lord, that as we serve you, we know that there are so many other people who are still suffering from COVID and other needs in our community. We pray for your grace upon them, and we pray for your grace upon us. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
So, thank you, everybody. Again, I made mention it's the first meeting of the year, but it's January 6, 2021, for our records. And the time is 9:14 a.m. We are in the third floor of Nueces County Commissioner's courtroom at 901 North Leopard, Nueces County Courthouse. Because we have a new Commissioner, I think it would be wonderful that we call role. I like the idea of him saying, "Present." Commissioner Brent Chesney.
Here.
Commissioner Joe A. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner John Modis.
Here.
Commissioner Robert Hernandez.
Here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Clerk, I do certify that we have a quorum, in fact, all members present of this Commissioner's Court. And so, we'll turn now to our safety briefing, and we have our safety director, Timothy Everest.
Good morning, Judge.
Commissioners, we're meeting here today on the third floor of the Nueces County Courthouse,
located in 901 Leopard Street. Restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third floor atrium as you exit the courtroom past the Human Resources Office. Please note, there's a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom. There are also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the third-floor atrium area. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the atrium wall next to the Human Resources Office. Participants responsible for dialing 911 in event of emergency is Connie. Participants who are certified in attendance this morning are Dale and myself, although anyone can render aid. In the event of evacuation, our egress route will be down the atrium stairs, exiting the La Pan Street entrance, and assembling in the parking lot across the street. Should there be a need to shelter in place, court attendees will remain in the courtroom. Depending upon the severity of the incident, the courtroom's double doors will be secured and remain secured until given further instructions from the Nueces County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. Nueces County Commissioner's Court is in compliance with COVID-19 prevention measures and social distancing practices. That concludes my brief. Judge.
Thank you so much. At this time, Tyner, I'd ask for public comment, and I know we have some folks online. I just wanted to say, for IT purposes, it's not a problem. I can launch my iPad, but I have no video on my screen. Just...
Go ahead and do that.
Well, I mean, I'm going to continue, but I just want to see if we can auto-correct that. So, first, we have First Assistant District Attorney Angelica Hernandez here with us, and I'd ask that you take the podium as soon as he finishes it, cleaning it, and we welcome you to court today.
Judge, also assigned is Michelle Putman.
That's correct.
Our take chief, can we go simultaneously and combine our minutes?
Absolutely. If you would announce your names for the clerk, and we will take you simultaneously. Oh, and actually, Tyner, they actually have an item that they are addressing, but in the interest of time, maybe we can advance that item so that they could...
We're going to have to ask to table it so we have time to get with Dale...
Never mind. It works out perfectly for us for the...
Dale Ashley, yes.
Okay, but it actually works out better for public comment if we're not going to take up that item.
Yes.
All right. Please proceed.
So, Angelica Hernandez, and I guess you want to state your name for the record?
Michelle Putman.
Oh, yes, of course.
So, we have on the agenda to be considered at a later time. It's going to be Item F3, and that's going to be a request related to SEJIS. So, Michelle and I wanted to come and talk to you about the SEJIS system. That's your Criminal Justice Information System, and Executive Order Number 8 out of the Governor's Office, which is now going to increase the reporting requirements related to the county's ability to apply for any grant funding out of the Governor's Office. So, take a moment to absorb that, because your ability to seek fiscal assistance and grant funding is going to be directly affected by whether or not this county is in compliance with the combined completeness percentage, as well as the reporting requirements for convictions of criminal offenses. Prior to January of '21, our requirement was seven days. As of January 1, '21, it is now five days. That means that we have to handle the cases, we have to get the judgments done, we have to get the dispositions entered, we have to coordinate with court clerks, we have to coordinate with different individuals associated with that, and that's what I want to talk to you about. When we came on the deadline, we worked very closely with Judge Canales. We worked very closely, and Michelle Putman is here because in our office, she really is our go-to SEJIS individual. She acts as a SEJIS supervisor, which were tasks not originally contemplated as the intake chief, but through the new measures of SEJIS reporting requirements, she kind of had to just take on that role, and it's extremely substantial. But we work with the clerk's office, mostly Lilia Ann. We work with Carl Dillard and Captain Whitmore with NCSO. We work with Chauncey and Lance Murphy with IT, and we have to be very diligent. Now, we gave up a position, and we came to you before in order to create one legal secretary position for purposes of SEJIS reporting. But when it came crunch time and we had to hit that 90%, please understand that just to move one percentage point normally means we have to move hundreds of cases, hundreds of cases, in order to just move one percentage point, and we have to be at 90. Currently, on the combined completeness percentage, we are at 82%. They take fiscal years 15, 16, 17, 18, 19 in average amount, and we are at 82% right now. So, that means we have to move thousands of cases between now and August, which means Chauncey's going to complete report after report after report, telling us about mismatches, telling us about misreporting, telling us about duplicate cases. Most of that goes through Michelle first, and then comes to me, and we pull every misdemeanor secretary off what they're doing. We pull, you know, Yvonne, who is our SEJIS secretary, and we try to get to that combined percentage. But now that they're moving it to five days, we have to have more than one dedicated individual out of our office in order to meet that requirement, and it's going to be a lot of work, because they're going to have to make sure they get the files from the attorney straightaway when they come out of court. It means that they're going to have to get those judgments entered, they have to be in OCA compliance. It means they have to be meticulous about the data that's entered, because make no mistake, what you're talking about is creating a conviction on an individual that deserves that information to be done correctly. There's more than one John Modis in the world, and I don't think Commissioner Modis would want us to mismatch his date of birth, and all of a sudden, he's a convicted felon by the stroke of one mismatch key.
We would enjoy that.
And unfortunately, it's Michelle normally out of our office that is having to fix that. So, it's not just a matter of getting the work done, but getting it done correctly. It's a matter of constant... I don't even know how many emails I have, and Michelle has, with Judge Canales, and Chauncey, and Yvonne, and Lilia Ann, and Captain Whitmore. It's five or six on a daily basis trying to get this SEJIS stuff done. And so, I say all that, and I want Michelle to talk about, a little bit about the workload, because part of this is cases that never get to us. The thousands and thousands of cases where someone gets booked in jail, so it creates a SEJIS number, right? It's a SEJIS number now counting against Nueces County. But the law enforcement agency never actually brings the case on that person. So, it's like, okay, DA, what do you do? Now you've got this case out there that never got brought to you, go fix it. And it's a lot of coordination, and I want Michelle to talk a little bit about that, because that's one of the biggest problems.
And just for the record, so what I've done, and this is what I was anticipating, is the conversation is just SEJIS, so that's how I've labeled it on the public comment, not attached to any agenda number, just SEJIS. It's kind of a...
Public comment.
Public comment on SEJIS. Thank you, Michelle. Please proceed.
Thank you, Judge. So, part of what we do is when anybody gets arrested on a case, or we receive a non-arrest case from law enforcement, and the case gets filed, then the person ends up getting arrested at some point in time and booked into the Nueces County Jail. At that point, the point of booking is when what's called their TRN is created over in the jail. That TRN number is what relates to that specific individual in that specific arrest, and that's what SEJIS looks at to determine our percentage for closing out particular TRNs. So, as you can imagine, every single person who's ever been arrested and booked in Nueces County Jail for every single charge for four, five-year period span is thousands upon thousands upon thousands of cases. So, with that, sometimes comes cases that we do receive and we're able to process, but there are a large chunk of cases that we just never receive from law enforcement for one reason or another. Sometimes, I honestly, I tell people, files just grow legs and walk away occasionally. There's no other explanation for it. Sometimes, on law enforcement's side, it just never got assigned to a detective for one reason or another. You know, computer programs are not perfect. Occasionally, they thought they brought it, they never brought it to us. And occasionally, somebody got arrested and booked in on either a misdemeanor or felony, but law enforcement chooses to file it with us as the opposite. So, somebody gets arrested on a misdemeanor, it turns out they have a prior conviction, that case is enhanceable, so it gets filed with us as a felony. And so, the misdemeanor side of that never gets closed out. So, these are just examples of a variety of the reasons why cases just don't get brought to us to get closed out one way or the other. So, in doing that, the last several years, I've been coordinating with our SEJIS representative, and he sends me a spreadsheet of every single TRN that doesn't have a prosecutor decision attached to it, meaning we either said we're accepting the case or we're rejecting the case in the system. This has nothing to do with the cases once they're actually in court and what happens. So, these are just cases that, for whatever reason, we have never received them. So, through those lists, there are tons of cases. Each misdemeanor list is 70 pages, felony list, about 70 pages. And so, we're tasked with having to go in and find out, figure out individually what happened to each of these cases. And is it something we still want to go forward on at this point? Is it something that just never got assigned and needs to be worked up? Is it something that we need to just kind of cut the ties at that point on it? So, we're doing an individual analysis on each of these. And again, 70 pages of each, 140 pages worth of cases, and really teeny-tiny lines on each page, so I would say there's thousands of cases that we don't receive. So, that's part of what I do, is I go in and look at each of those and figure out what happened and what needs to be done going forward to help closing those out one way or the other. Another part of it is our ability to present cases to grand jury. So, felony cases cannot proceed in court unless a grand jury has indicted the case. We have been able to proceed with grand jury during this time. We have been able to make use of the fourth-floor courtroom, thankfully, so there has been continuity in that respect. However, it's our understanding the district courts intend to eventually make use of the fourth-floor courtroom for jury trials, meaning we would no longer be able to use that room. So, work has begun on the fourth-floor grand jury room. However, they're sitting at a table, all 12 of them, very close proximity to each other, and I see the glass panes upper in here, and those actually look fantastic. That is not quite what has been put in the grand jury room, kind of the little shorter ones that just sit on the desk. So, we're asking 12 people to sit next to each other, very close, with just this little short piece of plastic between them. So, hopefully, we'll be able to get that resolved as well, something safer, since we are asking so much of these members of our community to serve on the grand jury. It's not something that just benefits us. It benefits the courts, the county as a whole, because that is the first step in a case moving forward in courts. Thank you.
So, we just wanted to come and just kind of put it on your radar. We can do it. I want to make that very, very clear. We did it last year, we met the 90%, we met the seven days, and we can do it. It takes teamwork, it's going to be a combined effort. It's nothing that our office can come in and say, "We did it, we take all the credit." It is a team effort. So, number one, we just want to let you know, we can do it, and we will do it, and we will accomplish it. But we're going to be coming to you for some help to get it done that's necessary, and we just wanted to open ourselves up to you during public comment if you have any questions about it.
So, thank you so much, and public comment. We don't have the luxury of commenting back unless somebody wants to, you know, sign up, but I can tell you, everything you said is incredibly valuable, and what I'd like to see is the opportunity to bring it back on the January 20th as a full agenda item, to continue the dialogue, almost, you know, where we could go backwards and forwards here. And then, of course, we'll adjust the agenda item as appropriate, Tyner.
Thank you for your time, and if we can, the DA's office would like to congratulate Commissioner Robert Hernandez and Jenny Dorsey, our new county attorney, and wish all of you well in this new year, all of the commissioners, as you do your work from a very grateful DA's office for everything you do for us and everything you've done during COVID. You've been tirelessly committed, and on behalf of Mark Gonzalez, we just say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have an excuse?
Yes, you may. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, if it's okay with you, I've got some folks on the phone. May I take that one, and then I'll come right to you?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So, I've signed myself up for public comment, as well as Cody Simper and Scott Walker for the purposes of our virtual tour here on Zoom, and so I would ask that they prepare themselves to unmute, but I signed myself up because it's a little premature. We would love, and we expect, to have both the Flower Bluff football team and the Veterans' Memorial football team here with us in Commissioner's Court very soon. But in the meantime, something really spectacular is happening. And 10 years ago, Coach, something really special was happening too. I cannot believe it's been 10 years since I last really had the opportunity to say you were our coach, and I guess it's official now. Now I can't be mad at you anymore for leaving Ray, because you've just done so great at veterans. I totally pardon you now, because we always knew you were special. And not only were you a fantastic football player yourself, but you have the magic touch with kids, and I know that personally, because you were my son's coach. But today, this is my official public comment, on behalf of Nueces County and all of our 360,000 citizens. While we will not all be able to be in the stands and tailgate the way we should, please know that we're wishing you, your staff, all of your players, especially those leadership players that are captains, and your principal, Principal Walker, the very best of luck in your upcoming semifinal game at state. I don't think we've been this far since, get this, since my, I think, mom graduated from Ray High School in 1963. So, it's a long time coming, and I am not surprised one bit that it's you. So, on behalf of Commissioner's Court, Principal, and Coach, please accept this as our official "Go get 'em, can't wait, bring home a victory." We need it here in Nueces County, but you've already given us the best gift of the new year. And so, with that, I'm going to yield to either one of you, Principal or Cody. Coach Simper, if you guys want to say something, I have signed you up for public comment at this time. And if not, that's okay, too.
Yeah, Judge Canales, I'd like to thank you for your kind words. 10 years really has flown by, and thank you for recognizing all the hard work for our student athletes. We hope to go represent our community well. Obviously, we are fighting for our Veterans Memorial community, but we're representing all of the Coastal Bend now at this point, and all of Region Four. So, I know that our kids are going to go, and they're going to play hard for each other and for everybody in the Corpus Christi area, and just want to say thank you again for having us and extending that recognition.
Absolutely. And Principal, again, every metaphor I use in public health has a football relationship. I think people figure out real quick, like where my heart lies, and it's pretty exciting. Your team has an amazing offense and defense, and you need both to win championships. So, we're excited for you, your school, and just want to say our heartfelt condolences as well. You've had a really tough year, and to be able to bring this home is so meaningful, I know, to your staff and your students.
Absolutely. Thank you, County Commissioners and Judge Canales, for having us on this morning, just to kind of echo what Coach Simper said. We're just really, really excited to have this opportunity. We're really excited for our entire community, our staff, our students, our players, our coaches, to represent, you know, the Coastal Bend and the Veterans Memorial, Corpus Christi area, the state semifinals. You know, our campus has been through a lot over the last few years, and so, you know, things like this, we get to see, you know, the power of athletics and how it can really bring our community together, and we really appreciate the support from you and the County Commissioners. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chesney has signed up for public comment.
Thanks, Judge. I just wanted to jump in as well and offer my congratulations. You know, last week was a tough week, because both of those great Corpus Christi schools were schools that I represent, and so I know it's kind of hard to root for two schools, but I was rooting for both of you, and y'all just did unbelievably well. It was an honor to come out last year and bring the resolution out to you guys at the school and honor you for your success last year on behalf of the whole Commissioner's Court. I hope this year, and we don't want to see you for a while, we'd like to, you guys, we hope we don't see you down here for a while, because we want your season to continue to extend, and what an incredible accomplishment. I saw a tweet during all this where someone said, "Isn't it amazing where there are less schools in San Antonio that are still playing in the 5 and 6A playoffs than there are in Corpus Christi?" The fact that there was two of y'all and only one in San Antonio left, and you took care of that, you know, that was taken care of too. So, congratulations on a super, super season. You continue to build on that success. As a Ray alumni, I too shared Judge Canales's a little concern when you left, Coach, but someone who represents veterans, it was a mixed emotion, and so you've done a phenomenal job over there, and Principal Walker, you as well. So, congratulations, we're very proud of you, we're looking forward to it. Like I say, I hope this year, you can bring the boys, and y'all can all come down here, and we can, the whole court can honor you. If not, I'll certainly come out again and do it again the way we did last year, but I know it's tough with COVID, but congratulations, we're very, very proud of you, we're rooting for you. I know, and I know all the Flower Bluff communities are rooting for you, too. And it's like I was talking to someone the other day, you know, everybody wants to lose to the state champion, right? If they got to lose, you got to lose. So, let's, you know, let's bring that thing home, but no matter what you do, y'all, it's just an amazing accomplishment to get to the Final Four in the state of Texas, especially in 5A football. It's amazing, very much amazing. Congratulations.
Commissioner Gonzalez, public comment.
You know, I'm kind of a little different here. You know, I'm a Miller Buccaneer. Once a buck, always a bug, right? But I want you to know one thing, there, every single Buccaneer out there is behind you. Every single buck out there that went to Miller is behind you, because we're looking up to you guys, you know, and I know you can do it. Give it all you got, give them the heart, and I know you come back victorious. Thank you, and good luck, Coach, and Principal.
Thank you very much. It's a wonderful feeling to have the support of the entire community behind us this Friday.
That's great. It's no surprise that your colors are red, white, and blue. It's no surprise that you represent the USA when you say Veterans Memorial. I think it's pretty fitting, and I just can't wait, and we will see you back as soon as you bring home that state championship. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us that opportunity, and we will now switch to our last member of public comment, unless Tyner tells me we have somebody else online. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Yeah, we would just like to offer anybody online to raise their hand. We've identified most of the people.
Okay.
But there's somebody with a number B162407, not certain who that is.
Okay, well, if there is anyone that needs to make public comment using our virtual system, if you'll please raise your hand. If not, we will now proceed. We have one last, final public comment, our county clerk, Kara Sands.
Thank you. I just want to, actually, my comment has to do also with the football game and veterans, and I'm a Flower Bluff mom. Both of my boys played varsity for Flower Bluff, and it was a great game, and I want to congratulate veterans, they're a great team. And I think we had that conversation I had with Commissioner Chesney, that if you want to lose, you want to lose to the state champs, and it's true. We want veterans to win, because now we're all behind them. I also want to congratulate the Flower Bluff Hornets. They're the second team in Hornet history to get to the quarterfinals, and they played their heart out, and that is nothing to be ashamed of, because you know what? They really, they lost to a great team. Something about defeat, so my son's a junior, and after the game, you would, you know, it was like, "Hey, I'll take y'all to eat wherever you want, guys, come on." And he said, "You know what? No, football season's over, we're getting ready for next season." Six of the juniors, they went to the gym and started on next season.
That's awesome.
So, good luck to veterans, I want them to win, but you know what? The Hornets are getting ready for next season. So, we'll see you next season.
Really great. It's a great way to, it's a nice way to start our meeting, this very good feel. So, with that conclusion of public comment, we will move on, Commissioners, and ask that you look at your agenda. We are now proceeding into F1. F1, and this morning, we have Kathy Art Blatner, our deputy manager for, excuse me, our deputy emergency manager, and she is here to give us an overview of Items Number 1 and 2, our current disasters that we still find ourselves involved with, COVID-19 and Hurricane Hannah, Items Number 1 and 2. Kathy, anytime you're ready.
Good morning, Commissioners and guests. Thank you. It is, COVID cases are increasing, hospitalization is increasing. We are, show as of yesterday, 201 new cases for deaths. We are working diligently to continue to test individuals in our community. We have a Nueces County COVID testing task force, six days a week, Monday through Friday, and a half a day on Saturday. We have Texas Department of Public Safety in Tidham coming in with a private contractor to test at the Memorial Hospital. Those testing times are from 9 to 4 on Monday through Friday, and 8 to 11 on Saturday. So, I'm sorry, 9 to 1 on Saturday. And we strongly suggest that individuals come, it's a first-come, first-served basis. There is plenty of testing supplies, and anyone can be tested at any time. Nueces County is also doing a single testing site in Robstown at the Boys and Girls Club weekly. It... It will take place on Friday, and it will be from eight to 11. And that is available. That should help people in the unincorporated areas of Nuasis County not to have to come into the city. Nuasis County has also, this week, created what we call the Nuasis County Volunteer Corps, and that is a corps from approximately 15 people who will assist in helping with vaccinations and testing whatever needs to be done to assist, to enhance our COVID, fight for COVID, to immunize our public. And we are working closely with all of the private providers in this region. We are working diligently to recruit new providers to become immunization providers to the state. We're providing them with information and education that is given to us from TIDAM. And so we are diligently working also with the nursing homes to see that they're vaccinated when, as soon as possible. And we are, and if they're having any sort of outbreak, we are working to get them PPE and, you know, do STAR requests to get them additional nursing. We're working hand-in-hand with Corpus Christi. The Corpus Christi Fire Department is also testing on Mondays and Thursdays for their first responders. All the first responders have to do is contact Chief Urban, and he will get them scheduled for a COVID test. Also, the Corpus Christi Fire Department is considered an immunization provider, and they are doing the immunizations for first responders. So we are continuing to work diligently to, also with Amistad Clinic, they're getting large numbers of vaccines, as is Krista Spawn. So we're working with them to assist them in any way that we can. We are continuing to, you know, work on our disaster and follow-up through, on Hurricane Hannah, for the claim that we applied to for FEMA. I think I will let Scott address the issues on that more. Does anyone have any additional questions for me today?
Do we have the testing sites anywhere online where we can post the list?
Yes, sir. There is online. You can click on COVID testing. And Connie Morgan, sitting in the front row, she keeps those updated, and those do change periodically through the week. So always check that testing site, all the dates, the times, and who is providing the test, and how you go about applying for the test, if it's in person. All that's provided on the website.
I do just want to echo that throughout the spike that we've seen of the surge in cases, our Nuasis County employees have had excellent access to testing. So I just, I want you to know that is something we're committed to keeping up because it keeps our departments' workforce as strong as possible. Unfortunately, it doesn't keep us free from COVID exposure always, but it does help mitigate the spread. So I just want you to know that if you're a department head or any employee listening today and you need testing, please reach out to the website, reach out to HR. There is always a test available for you. That's, I just wanted to add that.
There is also one new project that's come to light that will begin today. CBRAC and TIDAM are working together to provide rapid COVID testing to our fire departments and EMS providers so that they can do rapid testing anytime. They're getting their own units and boxes of testing. I sent out an email last night to all of the EDS and Robstown firefighters to determine what their needs were. Those boxes of rapid tests will be presented to them, we hope, today. They should be coming in from TIDAM. And what that will allow us is peace of mind. Those rapid tests, they're not PCR tests, but they're rapid tests. Then that way, when a fireman or EMS is getting ready to go home, when they've been possibly with a, going into a nursing home, or a probable positive or a COVID-positive person, they can do a rapid test to determine within 15 minutes if they are testing positive for COVID. Also, at the end of their shift, when they've taken care of our Corpus Christi and Nuasis County population, and they're going home to someone that may be at risk, they can test themselves to see that they're free of COVID when they go home. So we're trying to take better care of our firemen or EMS because those are our frontline workers, and those are the ones that care for all of us.
Does anyone have any questions for Kathy? These are always overviews, but please don't hesitate to, you know, call her office, my office. There's so many details really to share with you, and we're always happy to do so. But if there's any questions, she's happy to answer.
Judge, I think it's always important to emphasize a little bit more the vaccines during all this because that's what we're all getting questions about. So I know you're on that every day. Maybe you could just give a quick perspective on where you think we're headed on that?
Thank you. I appreciate that. The vaccinations are basically underway here in Nuasis County. We've received approximately 20,000 vaccines here countywide through a variety of providers, everybody from pharmacies that you would recognize, all the way to small clinics, federally qualified health centers, our city-county health, Corpus Christi Fire Department. The largest doses have gone to our federally qualified health center and to Krista Spawn, as well as our other hospital, Driscoll and HCA. The hard part with this is that Texas in general has received about 760,000-odd doses, and of course, our state is, you know, 20 million plus. So we are really, we're on a limited amount. So we are following Dr. Hellerstadt's guidance, our state director of, in this incident for us, and he has given us the direct orders to start with 1A. So Tier 1A is really focused on those healthcare workers, frontline workers, and assisted living centers. One of our biggest fears last week was that we had several situations. We had positives in our assisted living centers. You just, you just cringe. That just gives me chills up my spine every time I see that because it has a domino effect. So we're really focusing on those assisted living centers. The results of city-county health is we've seen about 700 vaccines since December 19th. We also got a nice dose on Christmas Day, but they're all gone. And so we are anxiously awaiting more, and I think it's okay to share with you that I push for more, like crazy. And I'm actually putting together a plan that would suggest to TIDAM that we can vaccinate up to 2,000 people a day through our drive-through mechanism. We are going to be supporting our partners. For example, this weekend, we're going to support Amistad and their logistics. We're also going to be supporting Krista Spawn as they receive additional vaccine. There's so many human, humans that are needed to do vaccination correctly that a hospital that's running full, it's hard for them to also lend themselves every day to vaccination. The goals are very simple. Use all the vaccine that comes our way, get them in people's arms appropriately, monitor those people adequately for adverse reactions. So we're very, very focused, but I want to be clear, we do not have any vaccine at this moment in city-county public health, but we are vaccinating all of our 1A folks, and we are pivoting to 1B. Who is 1B? Over 65. 1B has sort of two components. The next component, once it opens up, it's going to be pretty much almost a huge segment of our population. Those are people over the age of 18 years old, living with a chronic condition. So once we get there, then it becomes super widespread. So I want you to know that members of our Nuasis County employees started getting vaccinated a week ago. We did quite a few yesterday. We're really focusing on the 1Aers. Now, I'll share with you, I'm not a 1Aer, and I'm not a over 65. So, and I don't have a chronic condition. So you're probably, a lot of you are like me, we're just waiting patiently. But I will say, if you are over 65 and you are part of our Nuasis County family, please reach out to HR because they are looking for those people that are ready. We're ready to pivot to that arena, over 65, okay?
Judge.
Yes, does that help?
It does. And the other area is, those aren't the only vaccines in town. There's some at Spawn, there's some at Amistad. And again, maybe if you could clarify just how those, how those providers are determining how to pivot as well, too, because they have a lot of vaccines also.
Correct. So two things. I forgot to mention that we'll have, we have a vaccination signup, which is awesome, but we haven't really launched that out to everybody because we don't have vaccine yet. But when we get massive vaccines, you're going to be able to sign up online, and it'll spit back out to you an appointment, so to speak. You know, go to the Richard Orchard Fairgrounds between 12 and 4, you know, something like that. But right now, the way we're handling it is we, once we know that vaccine is coming, and we typically know the night before it's coming. I know that sounds crazy, but that's exactly how much notice we get, just a few hours. And then we know it's coming by FedEx, so we wait for that FedEx, and then by 11:30, we start to vaccinate, and we register people on-site. So we're going to graduate to the, everybody register on their own, and we give you an appointment. Bear with us because we are at the mercy of these limited supplies. Back to what Commissioner Chesney said. Krista Spawn, for example, received over 6,000 doses. They use those primarily for 1A. So even though there's great doses all over the community through different providers, they've been allocated. So you can't just call Krista and say, I want to get a vaccine, or a, but if you're Amistad and you're a patient of Amistad, you're in the queue. You're going to be, they're going to reach back out to you as a patient and say, these allocations are for our patients. So each provider targets, could I say it this way, their folks, right? Their patients. So just got a great text this morning from the, I think it's styled Men's and Women's Family Health Clinic, and they've been approved, but they have no vaccine. So she says, when are we going to get vaccine? And I'm going to check on that ETA for her, but there are many people that are approved but have not yet received, but in very short order. What is short order? Next 30 days. I predict that we will get much more vaccine, and we will be able to really do a good job on distribution. So again, keep paying attention to Nuasis County information through Facebook, Twitter, nuacisco.com, nuacisonos.com, and you're going to get the up-to-date information. And Commissioners, we're going to share it with you first so you can message out with us. Kathy, have I, I'm trying to think of what else. Let me just say something about adverse effects. I was always briefed initially that the second dose might make you feel, you know, maybe sore, fatigued, maybe even flu-like. I want you to know that that's also possible on the first dose. But we believe that the science, the CDC, the FDA believes that the risks are minimal compared to the benefits of not contracting COVID-19. So, but it's fair to say that your arm might feel sore, and you might, there's just a lot of, you know, a lot of the symptoms. Like the flu shot, right? So I just want you to know that it's not all butterflies and rainbows, but to me, it's as happy as I've been in a long time because I know that people are getting the vaccine. And I just, I'm hoping that we can demonstrate that we can receive more because whoever can do it the best is going to receive the most. That's kind of a fact.
And as soon as, and, and once you give a shot, you're required to load it into MTRAC for the state. And once you have indicated that you've used your vaccination, that's when you get in line for more. So as fast as you can get it, the faster, the faster you can give it, the faster you will get it. So yes, ma'am, I think you covered it all.
Okay.
Excuse me, Judge, may I ask a question, please?
Yes, of course. Commissioner?
Have we reached out to retired medical people, like, when we do get all these vaccines in? We'll be doing maybe a drive-through type thing?
That's a, that's a great idea. And so what we've done is through the Nuasis County Medical Society, we have reached out, and you wouldn't believe how many wonderful retired folks have helped us in our COVID clinic as well. We'll reach out again because I can't tell you how important it is to keep messaging it. So maybe, Kathy, we will reach out to the Nuasis County Medical Society to just to, as Commissioner Nonna this suggests, our volunteer corps that we're talking about, you might want to even, Commissioners, certainly not a mandate, but if you want to be involved with a volunteer corps, what you would be doing is sort of intercepting cars and giving them directions, and possibly, if you're savvy on the iPad, even registering folks, giving people breaks so that shifts can change and we can continue a seamless flow of cars. The Orchard Fairgrounds will not be the only location, it's just the one we're using right now. Please know that from Port Aransas all the way to the inner city, we have designated logistics, pre-approved sites for vaccine management. In other words, we're ready for the masses.
We have created a Nuasis County Corpus Christi and Public Health District Immunization Plan that has numerous site locations, and it also has, facilitates the holding times after vaccinations, and there are always two ambulances on every site to provide any urgent care and treatment that's needed or transport. So all of our current places will be drive-in, and those will also be able to facilitate some walk-up as well if we get transportation from RTA.
And eventually, Commissioner Gonzalez, we'll be moving, you know, potentially to the rural communities if nothing else. If we can't vaccinate on-site, then we will definitely move for transport and/or education. And so I envision your mobile medical clinic really playing a big role. Talking about your volunteers, it doesn't, it's medical personnel, doesn't have to be doctors. I know that I've had two nurses contact me saying that they want to be a part of the rural potent, piece of it. Rural healthcare has gotten a lot of attention nationwide. And so you're right, Commissioner, we can reach out. We don't have to wait for them to call us. But I know I've gotten two nurses that are active nurses, but they want to do, they want to go above and beyond. They want to specifically do rural commitments. So again, right now, because of the system of MTRAC, we need internet connection. We've got to have a really, in fact, we've, thanks to Lance Murphy, we've strengthened, and Edward Arretta, we've strengthened our logistics at the fairgrounds. In other words, once you run it a couple of times, you get better and better at it. You go, oh, the lights aren't that great here. We need stronger lights, or we need stronger internet.
Well, our target day hopefully to run, to get that mobile clinic out, be February, end of February.
But that might be perfect for timing on receiving vaccine.
And also the RT also stated that they would be willing to help with the vaccine.
Yes, and I think we're going to report that in today to Annette, and she'll be thrilled to hear it, and...
Because we'll have five different sites.
Right. It's great. We just need to make sure that it's available for all. We call that health equity. And there's so many other things going on, so please, you know, I know we had a lot of workshops, but maybe at the beginning of February, when things change and we get a lot of vaccine, a lot of product, maybe we'll do a workshop so that you can really learn more, and there's so many talents up on this dais that we could utilize. So thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Feel free to reach out to me.
On Bob Hall and Hurricane Hannah, we're going to leave that to the agenda items for more further discussion. We do have Scott Cross here, so we'll address it at that time. At this time, Tyner, let's move to adopt, I think we've got some minutes that need to be accepted. Let me see, one, two, three, four, five. Yes, go ahead.
Can we pull, do you mind pulling the 16th, just for a typo? I'll fix it. I'll put it on the next agenda.
Would you like me to have a motion to...
Judge, I've just moved to approve the other four.
Subject to?
Okay, I'll just do the updated, and so, okay.
I'll take that as a motion. And a second from Commissioner Gonzalez, and all those in favor of approving the minutes as listed in G1 with the typo being corrected. Please signify by saying aye. Aye. And I assume it's just grammatical. Yeah. Thank you. And at this time, we'll move for the adoption of resolutions. H1 is a very important one. It's the 2021 Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration on January 18th, 2021, and we'll yield and we'll yield the floor to Tyner for this.
Thank you, Judge. And we do have several people, um, from the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, uh, joining us virtually, just for your information. I'll go ahead and begin. Whereas each year in the month of January, the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated comes together to commemorate the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. And because this celebration march reminds us of our interdependence and reaffirms Delta Sigma Theta Sorority's commitment to the betterment of our communities through civility and service. Whereas Dr. King was quoted as saying, "The function of education is to teach and to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." And because the women of Delta Sigma Theta, uh, Sorority want to use their collective strength to promote academic excellence, provide scholarships, offer support to the underserved, educate and stimulate participation in the establishment of positive public policy, highlight issues, and provide solutions for problems in their communities. Whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter will be organizing the twenty-twenty-one Martin Luther King Junior Holiday Virtual Celebration and Commemorative March with the theme, "A Call to Serve, A Call to Action. Where Are We Now?" on January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nuaces County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday Virtual Celebration and Commemorative March, and further encourages the citizens of Nuaces County to join the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority on the spectacular occasion.
Thank you, do I have a motion? And a second? And I know we have some wonderful supporters online. Um, Tyner, would, is there a particular?
Um, I think Alexis was, uh...
I see Alexis.
And there's Wendellin and some other...
Alexis, would you like to, to start? I know, and then you can yield to, uh, Wendellin.
Yes, ma'am. Um, good morning, everyone. Um, I bring you greetings from our, um, President Stephanie Rhodes. My name is Alexis Williams, I'm, and I am the immediate past, um, President. And, um, so her relatives apologizing that she cannot be in attendance this morning, but she did designate me to speak on her behalf. So we wanted to thank the county commissioners for always supporting our sorority in our efforts and our community, um, programming. Uh, we wanted to highlight the activities that we have going on for the MLK Celebration. We did have to shift gears this year given what is going on with COVID- nineteen. So primarily, uh, our activities are going to be virtual this year. Um, the first, um, event is going to be on Thursday, January the fourteenth. It is a financial empowerment forum. So we recommend that you visit our Facebook page so you can register to attend that activity. And basically, we're going to be having professional experts to highlight areas of, um, estate planning, advanced directives, long-term care, home ship ownership programs, something that is very good to have knowledge of, especially given that we're, um, having so many things going on with COVID- nineteen. We are also having, um, our MLK March, like I said, it's gonna be virtual this year. Um, it's going to be on Monday, the eighteenth. And our theme this year, as we specify, is a call to serve, a call to action. And we just want to emphasize the legacy and the teachings of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. And we do have some guest speakers, and I'm gonna highlight those very briefly. One of the speakers that we have is our sorority sister, Joan Trumpier Muhalin. She is actually a Freedom Rider. She fought alongside Dr. Martin Luther King during the sixties, and she is our most esteemed sorority sister. Um, we're thankful to have her along. And also her son, his name is Loki Muhalin, and he is award-winning, Emmy award-winning, um, film director along with the county and, um, other county, city and county commissioners who always support us in our endeavors, so... This is a very special time of year for us. On the thirteenth, we will be celebrating our one-hundredth and eighth year of service and education for our community. And thank you so much for supporting us. And Sor Yvonne, or Sor Alicia Ben, she is, Alicia Ben is our Social Action Chair. But Sor Yvonne, I'm not sure if you have any additional words.
Yes, thank you so much for asking. I'm just gonna encourage everyone to come online and join us for those two events, especially the, uh, one on Monday will be very interesting to hear the Freedom Rider sorrow who is a Freedom Rider who worked and walked alongside Martin Luther King. Thank you.
Thank you to both of you so much, and, um, I just want to say that, um, we just look forward to this celebration. We really do. It is with a happy heart, a joyful one, that our community, city and county celebrates his birthday. And, um, I chose this one carefully this morning. I love so many of his quotes, how, how could you not? Every word that came out of his mouth was quotable. But the one that I love for this morning is these words, "Faith is taking the first step even when you don't see the whole staircase." We have really had to take a leap of faith in twenty-twenty as we come into twenty-twenty-one, and we didn't see that whole staircase, but we have stayed close to one another. And the ultimate question that Dr. King asked us is, "What are you doing for others?" And I think you all embody his mission, his faith and his words. And today, it is my honor to be able to, uh, ask for the vote for this proclamation. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. We look forward to being a part of the cities and counties' celebration. Thank you, ladies. Tyner, at this time, we'll move to item number H2. H2, which is in opposition to Texas Windstorm Insurance Association rate increases.
Yes, Judge, I'll begin. Whereas, on December eighth, twenty-twenty, the Texas Windstorm Insurance Association Board held a Board of Directors meeting and voted to raise rates on coastal policyholders, residents and businesses. Whereas, attached herein as Exhibit A is a letter signed by over twenty state senators and representatives requesting no rate increase at this time. And furthermore, several state senators and representatives requested that the Board of Directors not take any action and allow the legislature to review the rate issue when the legislature begins January twelfth, twenty-twenty-one and thereafter. Whereas, attached herein is the TUIA Board December eighth, twenty-twenty Agenda where there is no mention of any rate increase action to the public or the legislatures, and the TUIA Actuarial and Underwriting Committee presented a report and reported that the committee did not vote to raise rates. Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Nuaces County, Texas is opposed to any windstorm insurance rate increase and hereby request that Honorable Governor Greg Abbott abate the rate increase action taken by the Board of Directors until the legislature has an opportunity to review and take action on the windstorm insurance rate issue. Such abatement is further requested in light of this time of COVID- nineteen and economic distress which have impacted coastal residents and businesses.
Judge, I'd...
Yes, sir, go ahead, make your motion.
And would like to make some comments on...
Yes, sir, would you like the motion first? Motion and a second, and comments, please.
Thank you, Judge, uh, I'm gonna rant a little bit on this one. Um, this is a, a subject matter that obviously affects all of Nuaces County and certainly, um, a large portion of my precinct primarily because it's coastal. The, 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 uh, windstorm fight has gone on for years. As Todd Hunter's first chief of staff in nineteen eighty-nine, I started working on this issue. That dates me and makes me really old, I know. Um, but I started working on this issue with, with Todd, and it's, it's, it's a never-ending fight. And it really doesn't have to be that way if the legislature would, would just make this a fair system. The system is completely and utterly out of whack. It's an unfair rate structure system. It discriminates to coastal counties. There are wind events all over Texas, and yet, not all over Texas do we, um, contribute to the, the TUIA or have to participate in it. And that's the discriminatory part of this, that it's, it's truly aimed just at the coastal communities and they have to shoulder the burden on this. The system needs restructuring, the entire system needs to be restructured. And so this resolution represents a symbolic, uh, statement that says, hey, look, you didn't, there wasn't, it wasn't on the agenda. All these legislators signed up and said, "Wait, we're gonna deal with this in the legislature, we're gonna go do this. Wait, we're starting in a month, just wait." And the board said, "Well, we won't say what the, oh, yeah, anyway." The board was not polite and, and, and they were polite in their way they, they deal with things, but they were not, uh, uh, they didn't succumb to the, to the legislators' request, which is inappropriate based on the fact that we're not talking six months or nine months away. They met in December and the legislature meets in January, and they, they plan to make this a priority. I know the, the coastal representatives do, and if you look at the list, the coastal representatives are made up of, of a very diverse, um, Republicans and Democrats, but very strong Republicans and Democrats that plan to go in there and fight this very hard. So this resolution is very important to send a message to TUIA, who I don't know that they care when we send messages, but the legislature certainly does. They listen to us and they want this support, um, and, and we need to continue to support them. The TUIA Board is, is made up of primarily insurance representatives, which is inappropriate, uh, when you're dealing with this kind of situation. There's only one or two consumer reps. One is Georgia Neblet, who, uh, is from Port Aransas and has done a great job. But what you're, sometimes when you're the lone voice in the wilderness, um, it's a little difficult when most everybody on that board is made up of, of insurance representatives. So of course, they're always gonna favor the insurance industry, and of course, they're always going to favor rate increases. So the whole structure of, of TUIA is a mess. It's, it needs to be completely restructured. To me, it needs to be sunsetted, shut down, and they need to come up with some other way of doing this. Um, so, uh, you know, I know this court has always strongly supported this and will continue to do so, but, um, again, this is just one of those ones that, uh, you know, I have to rant on a little bit because I'm, I'm, I've literally been dealing with this my, my entire adult life and pretty much, and it's just, it, it doesn't have to be this way if they would just be reasonable in their actions. And I think hopefully with the stroke that we have now with the legislator and our legislators and local delegation and coastal delegations, then hopefully they'll be able to do something. So I strongly urge passage of this round. Thanks, Judge.
Thank you, I think we got a second. Do y'all heard it? Okay. Um, any other comments? Sometimes you just need to say ditto. Um, so, you know, ditto. And, um, this is why I believe it's so important to be able to have the right as a county to have legislative consultants because when they make these types of tweaks and have hearings, you need to be able to have people who represent you, school districts, cities, mud districts, water districts, environmental and economic development corporations. The right to be able to have your voice heard at all levels, uh, uh, depends on you being there at hearings, monitoring, and they're constantly moving the goalposts. So this is a great example as to, um, why it's so important that we have the right to have our voices heard. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Okay, great. Uh, we also have, um, another, um, uh, another important, um, recognition, and that is under I1, and that's the January twenty-twenty-one Employee of the Month. And I need to move over here to, um, or be ready for this one, just checking in the audience. And it might be that they're online, so let me just look. Uh, our tax assessor, Kevin Kishnik, made the recommendation here. I don't mind giving a little time, we could move on and come back if he wants to be present, Tyner. He may not have known the timing. He was in the hallway. I'll tell you what, Kara, are you walking that, never mind. I was gonna say, Deputy, would you see if our tax assessor collector is, Mr. Kishnik is hanging around there? Okay, I'm gonna hold on this one, uh, just to give him the opportunity. I'm not sure that, um, he, I would like for him to be here, and if, if, if he can't, then we'll proceed in just a moment. So I'll hold on the Employee of the Month. And I'd also ask the indulgence of the court to please hold on J, one, two, three, four, the board appointments, uh, till after lunch break. I am awaiting some phone calls back, uh, from some folks, and I just would really appreciate the opportunity to be able to discuss that, uh, those details with them. So we'll make those after lunch. So let's move to the consent agenda at this time, and I would ask our commissioners to, um, you've had the opportunity to review items A through T, A through T, and would ask at this point to, uh, pull any that are not ready for full, um, motion. Okay?
Judge, um...
Yes, sir, I know you have one, is it on J?
Is it J, Commissioner?
Yeah, got, I've got J.
C, I, and J, yes.
C, I, and J, okay? And, uh, any others?
A, you got it, you said A?
A, no, we hadn't done A yet, A?
And, uh, I, I, and J.
Okay, those are all already pulled, okay? And, um, okay, so we've got A, C, I, and J. May I have a motion for the remaining B, D, E, F, G, H, K, and then K through T? A motion, please, for approval.
Submove, second.
Okay, I'm gonna take Commissioner Modest's a second, even though I know there were multiples. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Let's start with A. There's a bill that you'd like some clarification on? Commissioner?
Yes.
And Dale, we'll pivot to you on this one.
I'm, I pulled up the bill on the, um, on the fairgrounds.
Okay.
I don't, I don't understand, are we paying for this? I mean, why, why are we paying all this money for the, um, it's our building, but I mean, are we losing that building, though, to, um...
These are the bills to Spectra?
Spectra, but are we paying for them or Spectra paying for them?
So in order to get reimbursed for these bills, so number one, it is our building, but we have an arms-length contract. So anytime we use the building, we still have to pay for the building. Um, that contract is, um, I think up for renewal in... At the end of the year, so the answer to your question is yes. We do pay for the use of that building. So when we had the Batel N ninety-five mask cleaning system in there, or when we had, um...
So I see it said here, uh, evals and testing. We paying fourteen thousand to use it for testing, for, to drive-through? And seven thousand also for drive-through? And then nine thousand for electricity? It's a lot of, but, I mean, it's not a, the Batel here, I think it's more like testing.
Well, the electrical is probably all Batel, I would say, um, because it's a huge generation of electricity on that. But I'd like to ask Dale, you're, you're probably coding, I'm sorry, you're probably looking at something that's pretty general, but he might have all the specifics on that. But the answer to your question is yes, we do pay for the right to use the facility, and we also submitted those costs to reimbursement for CRF funds, but the only way to get paid back is you actually have to pay them.
And all this, when the, uh, Spectrum does submit our, our claims to us, we make sure they, they break down with the cost for four. Sometime it's for the, uh, appointment cost of setting up the, the facility for the testing site. Uh, any electricity or, or, or setup that they might need is, is, is part of that cost. Uh, as you know, sometimes this runs four to five hours a day, maybe longer. So, so it's, it's their, their time and their staff to, to maintain the, uh, the, the testing site for whoever's there to do the testing. So, uh, we've asked Spectrum to provide us a detailed listing of the breakdown for that, and we can provide you whatever they provided to us.
You'd like to see it?
And, and just so you know, we have two teams that go over it like really very, very detailed. That's the Hagerty Team for Disaster Management, and also, um...
And this is also for, for reimbursement, but reimbursement ended on December thirty-first, right?
No, sir, we have, um, an extent, well, two things. It did end, but then it was extended, um, to the new, um, year.
To how long?
One year. The, the new spending relief bill that Congress passed extended CRF, um, funds for...
Can we get a copy of that? I haven't seen a copy of that.
Yeah, well, that, that's, that's the bill that was, that was signed by the president, um... Yes, that's the new bill. But having said that, we don't have any more money. But we still have the reimbursements in the pipeline. We've expended all of our allocation, but the bill does extend an entire year.
They can pay us back.
Yes, they can pay us back. And also, the state of Texas has at least $2 billion left from CRF. And so even if we go over our allocation, we are petitioning for additional funds.
And Maria has submitted most of this as reimbursement for those costs. And a lot of these costs are, there may be showing as today, but they're prior month expenses. So they qualify for the reimbursement that we've already submitted.
Right, right. So it should show the day the expense was, for it to qualify. It should show the day of the expense, right?
That's correct.
The detail we have that shows the date of the expense. However, the check required shows it is a today check run, but it's prior activity.
Okay, 107,000, I'm gonna just look that up and say, wow.
Yeah, no, it's very, it's substantial. And that's why what's kind of exciting is in this new spending relief bill, there is money for vaccine distribution. So as we spend money for vaccine distribution at the fairgrounds, we need to keep, and we have a new code, I can't remember the number.
Do you have a new code for, I don't know, the code on me? However, we provide the information to each of the departments so they know to track the expense. And since this is activities will be going to FEMA, we need to make sure the detail behind the transaction is very detailed because some of the auditing requirements are gonna be a lot higher because of how we go through.
Well, I saw that form, so I think it's pretty detailed. I saw it too, and I think it looks good, but, I mean.
Super detailed.
Well, sometimes you might say it's very detailed, but me being an auditor, it's not enough.
Not as detailed for you.
These FEMA auditors are gonna be a lot more stringent than I am.
Yeah, which is tough.
My staff has been sending back the forms saying this is not, someone saying I carry the cooler does not qualify for the detail that we need.
Yeah.
It lives in writing right now, anyway. It wasn't written before.
So they may hate us for making them more detailed, but?
But we'll love you for bringing the money home.
We get qualified for reimbursement.
Yeah, and like I said, so Hagerty is our disaster management group that works with us on FEMA. So one of the things that's happening is that, like, for example, this expense, let's just pretend hypothetically that the state of Texas said, okay, you've expended all your CRF. We would take this expense and move it to a FEMA reimbursement. So we have different buckets of money, but our first job is to get all of our CRF funds moved through TIDAM's reimbursement.
My last question is that if you get electricity, 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 are we paying the electricity or were there those days that we pay electricity?
As the judge was saying, when we had a morgue trailer there and when we have the cleaning office there, it's actually in an exhibit hall. And that pretty much the only thing that's driving the electricity in that hall is that piece of equipment. So we're paying just for that particular area for that.
Yeah, so we're not paying their whole bill. We have a meter on it. And, but I know it's a lot of money, but these systems are just huge suckers of power. And the morgue trailer, when it left, it really knocked those bills way down.
I understand if you said morgue trailer, I can understand it was a morgue trailer.
Yeah.
Well, that cleaning equipment also runs some very costly for the electricity for it. And we were making sure, we talked with Jason and their staff and we got a detailed listing of the bills behind the electricity to make sure we were paying only what we were required to pay.
And I think, Tyner, it might be good to bring back on another day. Let's be clear, there's no windfall for these guys. They lost money this year pretty wholeheartedly. And they're really hurting. So if we use their equipment and electricity and facility and don't pay them, it only hurts us in the long run as well, so. But by contract, we must. I would love to get it for free, but it just, by contract, we cannot, so.
I think we should pay them, but fair price.
So how about if we get him some more detail from Maria or whoever the backup is? Just send it over to his office when you can.
From what we've received from Spectrum, I know we've submitted some to Maria through the reimbursement side. And I believe some of those are being approved by TIDAM. Last time I saw there, they did approve some of Spectrum. So we'll make sure we get you the detail you need.
That is correct. So this is Maria. Yeah, I can send you, Commissioner, the reimbursement requests that have been sent to TIDAM for reimbursement. And yes, I think there was four total and we did get approval for one of them. And another one is pending approval.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. That helps. Commissioner, do you feel satisfied with that? Should, would you like any more directive there?
No, that's good.
All right. I'll make a motion then to approve item number A. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Modest. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, let's move to item number C. Item number C.
Judge, this is, again, not discussed, just wanted to vote separately. I'm just wanting to pull the crosswinds out and vote. I just wanted to abstain on that one.
All right.
I just wanted to vote differently on item J. And I don't want to have a big discussion. I just wanted to vote separately.
So there's a motion to approve item number C with the exclusion of the crosswinds portion, in which case we'll let you vote separately on that. And I will second that and we'll do it in two parts, okay? So all those in favor signify by saying, or do you want us to do it in two parts or just do the motion?
I think it's two parts.
Yeah, I would just?
I'll just do it in two parts. Is that, I don't want to take your motion. Let me let you make it.
I would mostly approve everything but the crosswinds bill first.
That's fine. Let's take that as your motion. And I'll second that from Gonzalez. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay, and then is this particular bill, just for reference, is this the one for the vaccination video?
I bet that's correct.
Yeah.
PSA, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the vaccine video, okay. And so, correct, it's a PSA, but I think it was actually the charges were for Public Health asked us to fulfill. Again, we receive information that we're getting vaccine about 6:30, 7 o'clock at night for a 10:30 in the morning. Get ready to film the very first vaccine coming to Noises County. That's what this was done for and that's what that charge was for. So I'll make a motion to approve that charge. If you want to see the video, it was aired on all three major networks plus Univision, Entrevision. And it's on our website and it's basically, quite frankly, an important piece of our history, which is the vaccination. We also use it to instill confidence in our community that the logistics is quite excellent at the Richard Orchard Fairgrounds for the administration of this vaccine. So with that, that's item number C. This will be the second, wait a second, did I get you the vote on the first one?
Yeah.
I did? You're saying no, you're saying yes?
We voted on the big one.
Okay, right. Right. That's everything but. And the second one, there's a motion to approve the work that they did in producing that video. And this is the ratification of that payment. Oh, I need a motion, I've got the motion on the floor, but I need a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. I've got a nay and one abstention. One nay, one abstention, okay? And then item number I is ironically kind of perfectly timed. We were just talking about that video. So that was spearheaded by Robert. So I is the ratification of amendment number one.
And Judge, this is intended to make that portion of his work reimbursable?
Correct.
Before the end of the year?
Correct.
FYI.
So this is important because October, his contract ran through October 15th?
December 17th.
I'm sorry, December 17th. And we're ratifying the amendment. We've already put his contract towards our CRF reimbursable funds. But this is an important ratification, Tyner. Or what do we want to say about it? I mean, an important, we're executing the amendment.
Excuse me, Judge?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I apologize. Probably misunderstood. What are we working on or?
Oh, I'm sorry. I moved to item number I. So as everybody pulls the issues that they want to talk about, I just, I move from, I moved from A to C and now item number I?
Oh, we're on I?
Yes, so sorry.
That's what we're talking about?
Yes, sir. So sorry. I confused, the reason I said it's kind of a connector is because Robert Duran is the gentleman that helps us, has helped us since, well, all of, almost all of 2020 on communication and anything having to do with public health, COVID, anything falling under the word disaster.
Well, again, I apologize.
No, my fault. I confused you because I said it's related. It's really not.
I will abstain to that, please.
Okay. So at any rate, Tyner, I'm sorry, take over here. So we're ratifying the execution of that amendment in order to get him reimbursed.
That's correct.
Really, ourselves reimbursed.
Right, so it only runs from December 17th to the end of the year.
Two weeks.
And he reimburses just to pay what he's done, right? I guess.
That's correct.
I guess he did something, I guess, right?
He works every single day. COVID-19 never stops, so. December 17th to December 30th.
On this one, I'm different than on the next one because?
I don't have a problem with that one either.
Okay, so let's just get a motion then.
If we're gonna get reimbursed, and that's the question, is do we, for sure is a hard word, but I mean, we know that that one is a potentially for sure reimbursable expense.
It is.
And we've already incurred it. So I'm different on this one than I am on the next one.
Okay, well, let's just take it as aye.
Yeah, I appreciate you clarifying that.
Thank you for the clarification, Tyner. Really helps. A motion to approve I. So moved, and then I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye on I. Aye, okay. All those opposed? Okidok. Now we're gonna pull item number J, which is basically, okay, now we're done through December 30th. And because we're in the middle still of COVID-19 and vaccination, we are asking the court to approve a new contract that takes us through, what date? June? June. Takes us through June. Half the year. I'm hopeful by June, we will have finished our vaccination distribution. We may not, but that is what I was comfortable with in presenting. Because, because we don't have, is this substantially the same contract as he's had before? There's really no change?
That's correct.
Okay. So before you is a contract that is substantially the same. The most important piece to know here is that we will be submitting this for reimbursement, but we no longer have CRF funds. And so my solution to that is that a funding source is, what is our department number for the special revenue for CJ?
0104 is our?
Is that what this one was logged to? Zero, Teresa, what is, what is the, it wasn't disaster, Dale, it was the CJ special revenue?
Which one?
Item number J.
Duran?
Yeah, Duran's contract.
It's gonna be funded from your special revenue, county judge.
But what's the number?
0136.
0136.
Thank you. 0136. So we will submit this to reimbursement, but because we don't have anything really, you know, we've kind of expended our CRF funds, I'm willing to put this towards special revenue, county judge, because I'm the one that uses this service the most, although it's available to the entire court. But we can't do without it because every single day we are messaging, we are answering a million phone calls and press requests and vaccination information. And this is how, this is how our community stays ahead of the curve and not behind it. We are one of the, one of two counties in Texas that basically put forth a vaccination management plan. There's a reason for that. That's not luck. That's effort. And so we will seek reimbursement, but in the meantime, we need to have a funding source that's tried and true. And this is the funding source that I present to you today, 0136.
And also, Judge, in the way of further clarification, we are recommending a new tract for the Bob Hall Pier Public Input piece. And we had included that in what was attached to the agenda on Friday when the packets went out.
Correct, and we've since changed that.
We've taken that out and Bob Hall Pier is not in there anymore because we're gonna?
We have a different route.
We have a different route.
And that's why you gave us a new copy.
That's a new copy and the clerk has that copy.
Not that we just got this copy. So Commissioners, it was to actually assist in what we made a decision after the fact, right? We wanted to make sure we had options, but once we found a better option, we no longer needed to have it in here. So that's why you have a new contract. But that's the only substantive change.
That's the only change.
Right.
So this is coming from the judge's special revenue account?
Yes. And I will be very mindful that, that we will try to get the reimbursement as well because I would like that opportunity and?
Let me just say one thing. When we say judge's revenue account, all of those revenue account, everybody belongs to the taxpayers. It's the same thing. It's not mine, it's not yours. It belongs to taxpayers. My revenue account belongs to the taxpayers. It's not mine. You know, I mean, I can probably spend it easier, but on things that I probably want, you know? But I have to have the support of everybody else. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, and I know where you're coming from, but I don't know if I can go with this. It's a lot of money here, Judge, I mean.
Well, I mean, I think the reason why we have special revenue fund is because we can use it for whatever we feel is important and necessary. It doesn't necessarily get pigeonholed into specific type projects. It's very, it's a catch-all that allows us to do much. And, you know, the judge feels that this is important under, I think, I'm not to speak for her, but I mean, we've had lengthy debates over this. I mean, it seems every week that, you know, there's abstentions or votes no. And so I think that this is a solution that it puts it on the judge. It's her funding that she's accountable for and responsible for. And, I mean, it's a courtesy that I think that we give to each other. I mean, there's projects and things you've done with your special funding that we've given you courtesy and deference to. So I get where philosophically, you know, may not agree with what Mr. Duran is doing for the county. He's here. I think we're too late in the game already to go and change on this kind of work that he's doing, this scope of work that he's doing. But, you know, sometimes I think we have to hold our nose when we go and vote for things, even if we don't necessarily agree with it, especially if the judge is saying this is from her funding source that she feels is a priority. Because I'm not gonna go and question you. I'm not gonna go question Commissioner Chesney or Commissioner Hernandez. And I hope you all don't question me when I have requests to use special funding to go a certain way. And I think that's where we're at. It's, you know, do we give deference and courtesy to a member of this court who wants to use money from their special revenue for a particular project? I don't think it's hazard. I don't think it's, you know, ill-used. I think it's for its purpose. And I think, you know, at least the way I interpret it is to give us a chance to say, the judge feels so important that it continue that it's from her funding source rather than, like you say, kind of the more bigger general fund, that we would vote on this. And the fact that we still have a potential of getting reimbursed, I think is always something worth looking forward to, but?
Well, and I really do appreciate that. And it's not even just a matter of paying deference. It's confidence, trust, and integrity, of which I believe all three I have earned this year with emergency management. We had $830,000 given to us and we brought in $5.2 million. That is, those are the facts. And we do that because we are constantly messaging. When we talk about having zero vaccines and trying to do 2,000 a day, we have to create that communication piece that gets us to getting those 2,000 vaccines here in our community. That doesn't happen from magic. It happens because we have a crisis communications system and team. And you know what? Connie's a part of that team every time we change the website, every time we need to pivot and tell somebody what's going on. the website, every time we, uh, need to pivot and tell somebody what's going on. And again, there is a difference, um, uh, when you say to somebody, look, it's deference, but it's also the confidence that I have in you as an emergency manager to bring this county what we need. I think we've done an amazing job, uh, from 2020, getting the public the information. Uh, I'm still doing press briefings. I, I do them once a week officially, but I do them every single day unofficially with reporters, um, that are local, state, and national. And that helps Nueces County, because as we tell our story, our story, uh, shines a light on our needs, the resources that we're looking for, or conversely, the resources we have, uh, that, that we can tell the state, we can help you. So I believe this is in the best interest of Nueces County to continue the good messaging and the good, quite frankly, strategy that has kept us, uh, from worst to first. And that is, um, that is why I believe it's an important, um, item for the agenda. And I have funded it and, and I think that we're gonna get reimbursed, just like I took eight thirty and made it five point two. I will, my goal is to bring us the next few million, uh, that, that this county needs, because I hate to break it to everybody, but COVID-19 is far from over. And, uh, and we don't have any more, uh, local or, nobody does. It's not just us. There is no more local funds in this new relief bill, but there are vaccination funds and we need to go after them. But to do that takes a constant effort, constantly. Um, finally, let me just say that COVID is not the only disaster we work with. The way the scope of work is, it's disasters. So that means when we had the incident in the Inner Harbor, Robert Duran was on the job. When we had the incident off Bob Hall Pier, Robert Duran was on the job. When we had Hurricane Hannah, he was at my right-hand side, uh, on the job, you know, sleeping up there, working the, working all of the issues, the disasters. So it's, it's disasters plural, and we've had multiples this year. Three explosions, just quite frankly unbelievable, plus a hurricane, plus tropical storms, and, um, and of course, the ongoing COVID. So I would ask for the deference and I would ask, uh, for the confidence, uh, to keep doing the good work that we are doing in emergency management. With the funding source that does not take, uh, from, from anybody, in fact, I'd say that this is a benefit to the taxpayer. They wanna know every day what's going on with vaccines and COVID-19.
Excuse me, Judge.
Yes, of course.
His primary duty is, is to inform us, the community, how far we've gone along with COVID-19 and other disasters. Well, my feeling is that I think Corpus Christi and this county has done a very good job. And by, if you saw the news this weekend, everybody knows that they need to wear their masks, they need to wash their hands, you know, the three Ws. And, uh, you, you can't go into an establishment here in Corpus Christi without wearing a mask. That's, you know, like being mandated.
Yes.
You know, I mean, so everybody knows that, uh, what we have to do and what have to keep doing. So that's, uh, what I'm saying. I just don't see it there.
So it's not just a matter of, um, the three Ws or the, um, or what I would call the basic information of the data that emergency management pulls, but there's tremendous complexities. For instance, putting together the daily ICU capacity rate, um, to produce a dashboard that tells people whether or not we're in extreme risk. When you see cases that are two hundred, two hundred, two hundred, two hundred, you say to yourself, it looks very stable. And it is. But there's a cumulative effect to those two hundred cases. And so what we do is we work daily, every day, with all the three hospitals. We work daily with, um, uh, really both public health and the hospital district, because we manage all of that, um, indigent care piece. There are so many levels to messaging. It's not just a matter of what you see on the website. But when we started COVID-19, we did not have a Facebook. We did not have intergovernmental email or intergovernmental public releases. We didn't have Twitter. We didn't have a website that we could control its main homepage. And we've been able to transition to all of these different platforms in a way that's been incredibly helpful to the community. We have a system that's a good one. When you have an incident that lasts a day or two-day or three-day, we call that PIO in emergency management. But the issue with COVID is that it doesn't let us just tackle COVID. It makes us work while we've got this disaster every day, twenty-four hours a day. And so to be able to say that I've got somebody Saturday, Sunday, there's no overtime, right? It's just you're on the duty, you're on the clock all the time. We use this mechanism in order to talk to the university, the community colleges, the city of Corpus Christi. There's so much more than just what messaging means to us about do the right thing. And the one thing I know about, um, about crisis communication is that if you let up, it's almost like opening the door. You, someone puts their foot in and flings it right open. You just can never let up. But it really isn't about the basics anymore. You're right. We've done such a good job of reinforcing it. This is about the things that nobody sees, that are required for me to be able to go out there and say to Chief Nimkid, like I'm doing today by letter, "Chief, we can do two thousand vaccines a day here. Let me explain why." And then all of that messaging from all our different partners comes into, to play. Every day, I probably receive at least fifty different messages from people that are outside this county. They could be mothers, fathers, um, they are, uh, you know, desperate for medication or therapeutics. When we're out of convalescent plasma, like this, I need to be able to run on a dime to get a message campaign out for convalescent plasma. Everything we do must be coordinated with the city. Why? Because we're city-county health. I don't even get the luxury of making the decision on my own. I've gotta pull in our partners immediately so that we can be in sync. Yesterday, I got an FAQ on vaccinations. I found five different errors that need to be corrected. In order to do all of this work, we have a very small staff. Out of all the urban counties, our county judge's office is the poor, the, the one that's the lowest on the totem pole for staffing. It doesn't exist. We have, you know, a main, um, a staff of two, basically. And so what we've done during COVID to assist us is use outside resources. Why? Because we know COVID won't last forever, and we know we don't want that budget burden forever. And because we, we know that these folks are on the clock twenty-four seven. And again, I think we've done a really excellent job so far. And if we had a CRF bill that would extend it, it would be a no-brainer. The only reason I suggest that we do from the special revenue is so that it becomes a net neutral. And, uh, and I do appreciate Commissioner Gonzalez's concern. And every project we do, every single one of them, when we put a fence at the foreyard, that's taxpayers' money. Maybe they wouldn't wanna do such a big fence. Maybe they think you don't even need a fence if you're there every day. But that's a decision that he makes based on the best judgment that he has knowing the circumstances. And I can tell you, as your emergency manager, I'm not asking because I don't need it. I'm asking because I believe we do need it. And with that, we'll just take the vote and, um, and I'll answer any, any further questions. But it is a, uh, it is a maraud of complexities. And I love doing it, which, which is what helps me keep going every day. But it is a real, uh, quite frankly, tribute to our staff, our holistic staff, that we get as much done as we do, given all the other burdens that we have every day. So with that, um, again, I would like the motion, um, to be called for a vote on item number J, either abstention, uh, a yea or a nay, to allow the execution of the contract to continue the messaging response and all of the emergency situations that we have. Again, not just COVID, but all the ones that have presented themselves. And the time scope is June, and the funding is oh one three six, oh one three six. And I'll make the motion and I would ask for a second at this time.
Second.
I've got a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All abstentions?
Yea.
Abstain, Commissioner Chesney?
Nay.
Nay. One abstention. And Commissioner Hernandez?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. So I've got, uh, two yays, two nays, and one abstention. So the motion passes two to one. Abstention is if you are never here. So.
You don't change mine to no.
No.
Well, you've already get indicated the abstention.
I've got a right to change it. I can change it to no.
Okay.
Okay, three, two.
All right.
So, so can I ask for clarification then? What is our, our plan? It seems like that this, this vote failed. So, I mean, with his services, do they, do they end? Are we left without someone to help craft?
Yes. Yes, we are. We are. And I would ask that, that you reconsider your abstention, Commissioner, because, um, you're.
I would think that, that this is why we hired, uh, what's her name?
Well, her name is Connie, not what's her name. And, and the most important thing to understand is the nature of her, she does not do that.
Connie is good at that. She's always been doing that.
Okay.
You know, I don't understand why we're not using Connie more than, you know.
You know what? Connie, it's, it's a lack of appreciation for what Connie does. Connie is one hundred percent on duty and on the job, but she has a, it's, it's a completely different assignment that Connie has. Uh, this is a, a, a completely different assignment. I don't think that we are gonna be able to do the types of work that we need in emergency management without somebody at our side for this. Connie actually assists and is part of this communications team. I will tell you, at the city of Corpus Christi, they have over forty PIOs, forty. I mean, we have a very lean and mean team here.
Why don't we hire somebody full-time?
Well, because that would be, that would be, you're worried about the taxpayers' dollars, and I am too. This is a much easier solution because it's short-term. It's six months versus somebody who would incur benefits and somebody, uh, and also we would have to post for that position. And I think that's a great idea that we should consider in budget. Our staff needs to be larger for communication, and I would be most welcome to bring that up during budget. But this is a way to not incur bu- budget burden expense. This, these dollars are here and available to us. So.
Excuse me, Judge. How long, how long has this Mr. Duran been on board?
Six months.
Six months. Okay. If we didn't have him, uh, who from the county would be taking care of this?
There, there is nobody, sir. We, we were not prepared for COVID-19.
What I'm saying, you also mentioned the pier, you know.
The what?
The pier. Bob Hall Pier.
Yes. And so what I, I had offered for, in the scope of this work, I had offered for Roberts, since it's a, since it's part of a disaster, to include that, because we need public input. But Commissioner Chesney had another idea that he's gonna bring with his special revenue, that he wants to hire somebody to be a specialist in this arena with his special revenue. But in that case, I guess it's gonna be okay. But because this is COVID-19 and, and, and an emergency, um, I guess.
Excuse me again. Uh, Mr. Scott is the director of that area, right?
Yes, Mr. Cross. Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Scott.
That's okay. He likes Mr. Scott, too. That's his first name.
I apologize. Wouldn't he be the one to, uh, take, I've seen him in the past, but we've had other, you know, hurricanes and, you know, he's taking charge.
Yes.
And, uh, I've never heard that we've had, uh, and whoever does the, for this Jacobs engineering?
Yes.
Wouldn't they, uh, wouldn't be beneficial to the community to have the same person evaluate, you know, what, when, who's they've done, I believe.
Right. So just so you know, later in the agenda, you'll get to see an RFQ that's gonna be before the court, and it's actually in there, inside that scope of work. Having said that, again, there has to be a little more sort of thirty-thousand-foot view. Scott Cross has five major projects that we're working on simultaneously. That's what these disasters do. They disrupt your life. They create chaos. They don't, even if we were working normally, we would have too much to do. The fact that we have a hurricane and disaster inside of another disaster that limits our workforce, it makes it very burdensome. But to answer your question, the public input piece is very special. The engineers are gonna get that as part of their, um, scope. But in order to qualify for the grants that we need, we have about sixty days. We really only have thirty days, sixty days to get the grant in. Maybe a little longer, maybe seventy-five. But we only have the month of February to get the public input piece done. Okay? And, um, and so the public input piece is, um, is, is critical, because the grants rely on it in order to qualify. And I, I don't wanna belabor the point, but again, there needs to be a little bit of faith and trust in the fact that the way these protocols are done is you need someone who presents themselves as an expert in technology. If your constituent says, "Hey, I called your office and I have an idea on Bob Hall Pier," the way I ask the, or the way your assistant asked the question about what they think might be different the way my assistant. So we try to create a consistent system that's reliable online, so everybody's answers are at least in equal format to everybody's, to our questions. And we need technology to do that. Our county was the most unsophisticated urban county in the state of Texas, period. You had no Wi-Fi in this courthouse. You had literally no real investment, okay, made by our previous courts in technology. Those were choices. All right? We're not talking about computers. We're talking about how people communicate in a digital age. We live differently now. And what's hard about our community is we live both ways. We're super rural in many ways. We're bilingual and trilingual in many arenas. And we're also, um, we're also very urban. So take the COVID-19 hotline. We had, that was something we put up on the fly. So a Mr. Duran, for instance, helps us assemble with our IT people, with Connie, how we're going to assemble a hotline. She takes the piece of it, that puts it on the messaging for the, uh, website. She coordinates all of that information with our host, Granicus. Okay? IT makes it possible that the lines get hooked up to the people that need to answer them. And then a Mr. Duran would come in and we would basically work with all of the stakeholders to make sure that everybody knows that that hotline exists, how they can access it. He gives content to me, gives content to Connie. We have a great, well-oiled machine. To stop it now is quite frankly, uh, detrimental to our efforts.
I'm just going by the fact that, you know, I did work here for twenty-two years and I know how things, you know, worked or what. And the previous administration, uh, that was, uh, here, uh, I thought Mr., the commissioner from precinct one was a, you know, a high-tech person, that he had everything under control, which should have been Commissioner Pusley. That's what I understood. Okay? And, uh, I would think that the IT director would also take the lead on putting us all together, how it should work.
And, and he does. So in two weeks' time, we made our courts go remote. But none of our departments had iPads. None of our folks were prepared to work remotely with communications that would have cyber security protections, and whether we could also have the ability to print off-site. What we're discussing is absolutely critical to what Angelica came this morning and told us about CEGIS. There's a real disconnect between what normal people who aren't in the IT world and county government think IT does, which is fix your computers, and what we really do at IT with CEGIS. So the answer to your question is, we do not have enough staff to do what we need to do. And we have always run super lean so that we can do the very best for the taxpayer. Sometimes that's good, and sometimes it's not good. And when it's not good is when your staff is overburdened with emergency management, um, issues. And that's what we find ourselves now here. It's not just one thing. It's multiple disasters at once. Um, and if you don't communicate with everybody, I will tell you there's hell to pay. Every time I make a move, I make twenty phone calls. Twenty. I've actually counted them. Because I need to call all of the different jurisdictions, all of the different legislative staff members, the legislators, at the federal level, at the state level. If you want our county to have a strong response, you need to give the county the resources they need. And you need to give the emergency manager, in this case, myself, the resources I believe we need to continue that strong response. To stop now is, is not, uh, is not prudent. But more importantly, I have always been able to deliver. Again, this county spent over six million dollars in its response. We were given eight hundred and thirty thousand. I promised that I would go and get us everything that we needed, and I have. And, but the way I get to do that is when I have a team of support behind me. Otherwise, I don't have enough hours in the day to get everything done. It, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a complaint. It's a, just a matter of fact that we have been working in an unbelievable, a systematic way, and I'd like for it to keep working positively for our community.
Judge, can I just throw something real quick in?
Yes.
I, um, and I don't, and you know, I hate to do this. And so me even suggesting this is just kind of a, trying to find some, I don't know, middle ground's not the right word, but something to, to offer other than just a no. I, I, I think a county this size, and believe me, I hate doing this middle of the year, but I, I think a county this size to not have a PIO that reports to the court is, and, and assist the court in messaging is, is. is, and, and assist the court in messaging is, is.
Crazy.
Not crazy, but I think it's something we need to look at. So I would be willing to look at something like that. And, and again, I hate doing it mid-budget. I rant and rave about this, and so I'm going against everything I rant and rave against. But because it, I know it's important to you and it's important to the court and, but I just, for my own reasons that I don't want to regurgitate, I just can't support this particular proposal. But, but the need is there. So maybe if we looked at addressing the need in a way that was different, maybe we should just table this whole thing for now and come back and revisit it. But I, what, I mean, I'm just trying to.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy to table it and look for another, you know, uh, way around. Teresa, did you want to make a comment?
Yes.
Or I don't even have to table, we can just bring it back another way if you want to. I, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out.
I appreciate, I appreciate it. Let me see what Teresa wants to add to the conversation.
Okay, I was just going to add that another way to continue his services is to make it a personal services agreement, reduce the, the total amount of the agreement and provide a purchase order to continue the services for Robert without stopping him in his tracks, not moving forward with this professional services contract that's not getting approved here. Uh, and you can do a purchase order. You can do a purchase order as long as the cap is less than fifty thousand dollars and it's a per- personal services agreement. That's how you can, it can be done. But you're going to continue everything he's doing that we don't want to stop, that we need to have the services for, and then budget for this parti- this position that we need, uh, in our next budget cycle.
What, what are the nine thousand dollars travel for? I mean, that's, that's three times that we all get, but.
Uh, it's to pay for his hotel, travel expenses for his hotel. He, you know, he's coming out of Austin, I believe.
I didn't, I didn't know, maybe I didn't read the contract, I guess, but, the last one. But I thought it was just strictly for travel, not paying for a hotel also.
Right, so Teresa, that's a good option for us. And, and I certainly, uh, want to move on with this agenda. And so, um, if, if it's the will of the court, I'm happy to table this item and bring it back for a different opportunity through, whether it's purchase order or, um, I might, I might remind everybody that the hospital district paid for the first six months of the contract. And, um, so, you know, that might be, and again, that was so that we can get the hospital district reimbursed, which we did. We reimbursed the hospital district through CRF. So, um, at any rate, are you, would you make a motion to table, Commissioner?
I don't know that, after listening to Teresa, I don't know that we have to do that. I, I, I think you can just.
I can.
And I think we could, I, I'm, I'm, I'm up for looking at a PO, PIO. I mean, I, I think your concept is right. I just don't like this one. And so it, it's not because I don't trust you, it's not because I don't believe you need it. I, I, it's just, I would like to look at it a different way. And believe me, me looking at something like this mid-year makes me sick to my stomach. But I, I get that we, we need to do something, and I don't know what exactly it is, and.
Yeah.
I think the appropriate, if I could say.
Go ahead, Michael.
The appropriate action at this time would be to table so that we can look at this a little closer and then come back with, if we need to come back to court with something, then we will. If it's going to be a PO that's less than fifty thousand, that which are the POs that we don't bring to court, they come to y'all in the form of the report that Dale gives you on all the POs.
Right. Yeah, it, that's fine, that's, that's.
And then, and then this discussion about, uh, trying to find a PIO, I don't think is prudent, um, to stop Robert Duran now and then wait for budget cycle and all these months to go by without having that service.
That's what I'm saying. And so. I'm, I'm willing, what I'm trying to say is I'm willing to do something I don't like to do, which is look at something before the budget cycle, if that's something that the whole court wants to do. So I, I think we just, let's just move on and you look at what you need to, and let's look at a PIO and let's bring it back and.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, we'll.
But it can still be accomplished just through another method, Judge.
Right, just through another method. Okay, so we're just going to move on, Michael.
So I, I need to ask a question because I think we're getting some direction here of how to move forward. And, and I, in the back of my head, I was thinking, you know, because the judge is, you know, expressing a lot of what she's had to unravel these last two years, and that's because we have run a very lean and mean staff, all of us have. You know, and you compare us to other counties, there are smaller counties in Oasis County, extremely smaller, that have a lot more staff for the commissioners, for the, for the court itself and other positions. I strongly do believe in having a PIO. Now, the position that Mr. Duran is serving right now is basically in essence that.
Exactly.
And so, but we almost get a two-for-one, right? Don't we get a two-for-one with Vanessa because she was interning? I don't know if she's working for him now, but, so we're, we're, we're missing out on, you know, we could be missing out depending on how that works. That's got to be worked out, Judge, you, you know.
Yeah.
You work it out, but I just, that's another thing, too. It's like, well, we're missing, you know, could we potentially be missing out? Because I know she does a lot of work also for, um, for the Admiral. So, um, that would just be my concern as we move forward, just to kind of bring it up so we all kind of remember.
You're getting an employee without the overhead.
That, that's, I know that's a big part of, of saving the cost of a contract. That, that's the benefit of it. It, it, it seems like it's heavier on the front end because of the overall cost, but it's because you're not in doing anything with retirement benefits, anything like that. So, yeah, I, I get that part.
And, and we're extending, just so I can be clear, because COVID-19 hasn't stopped. I would be delighted to stop once COVID-19 stops ravaging our community. That is the issue. And, and the, the thing is, is that, uh, I think we've, I'm not going to put words. Jenny, now I'm going to put you in the hot seat, but I think we've taken a vote, and so we need to move on. This is my opinion, but I'd like to hear from you. But what I think that I'm hearing from our procurement is that there's another method. Go about it a different way and come back to us.
And bring that discussion at another.
Right, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm also yielding to the discussion. It's good, I'm not opposed to listening, but I think once you take a vote, unless we go backwards in time, there's really nothing I can do to unravel it. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
My too. So let's, we'll move on, okay? That, that's, that's the correct order. But there is another way, and I think that you're hearing, and Commissioner, if that's okay with you, that rather than, I'm not able to do a directive, but I'm, I'm hearing there's another way, and we will pursue that and bring it back to court. Michael, is that right?
Yes.
Commissioner, is that kind of where you were headed?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, modest, is that kind of where you were headed? Okay, so we're going to move on. All right, so, um, and we will get working on that immediately. So, and let's see, I've got a, I've got one more? No, we can move on to, I just wondered if Kevin ever, uh, materialized. Kishnik. I, I feel bad because I didn't get to do his. Okay, just somebody signal me and we'll stop and go backwards in time if we need to. Let's move on to regular agenda three A one, three A one. On the phone with us is Noe Inahosa.
Judge, can I just?
Yes.
I'm sorry, real quick, I think.
Did I miss one?
No, no, I was just going to say, were you going to, did you want to, somebody wanted to table number two? Do you want to go and, are we still tabling number two somewhere? I didn't want, or somebody told me that, Diner or somebody?
Yes, we are, but did you?
I was just going to make motion to table and get it.
All right, well.
If anybody was sitting around waiting, I doubt it, but.
You're being antsy on that one? Yeah, okay. All right, number two is fine, I'll take a motion. We're not prepared at this moment for number two. On the regular agenda, three A two. I'll take a motion to table. Uh, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, next meeting, January twentieth. Signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, um, and so, um, we'll go back to Noe.
Sorry.
That's okay, it's good to move things off our agenda. We'll go to item number one. That's the discuss and consider approval of options for a 2021 plan of finance from Oasis County, including options for the county's capital needs, opportunities to save the taxpayer money in the coming years. I had an opportunity to visit with Noe, so I know he's got a, a presentation here for you, and we welcome you to court.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Judge, members of the court.
Good morning.
Happy New Year to everyone. And for our honor to come to you through this means this morning. Not a very, I guess, more common practice than, than anything else, but in any event, I'm here in Dallas and we're, it's, it's, it's wristling and cold up here. Hopefully Corpus Christi is a little better today. Um, very quickly, uh, what's in front of you, you go to page two there, Diner. Uh, it's something that we, we visited with you at the end of last year. Uh, this is a plan of finance that is very preliminary again. We're hoping that, that you all, as a court, come together on prioritizing some of the project needs, uh, for 2021. Uh, this is not something new, something that we all discussed back, uh, in 2019. Now is that time again for you all to sharpen your pencils and, and prioritize on what you believe the, the significant capital projects are going to be funding for. Uh, this page two, as you can see again, is, is basically the way your, your debt service payments, your mortgage payments are on the various loans, on those, on that list of loans. On the top, uh, the, the green row is a, is a loan that is carrying an interest rate of north of five percent. We think we can beat that interest rate with about a one-point-two-five or one-point-five percent, uh, in today's market. Uh, we're hoping that if you do decide to borrow some money that, at the end of the day, knowing how conservative the court has always been, that whatever loans we get into the market for new projects, that this refunding or this, this bonds of 2012, since they're subject for savings, can provide you not only savings, but also give you an opportunity to, uh, to restructure debt and not impact the tax rate. So having said all that, I'm going to take you real quick to page seven, which is a scenario that conceivably, it could be the worst-case scenario. The judge and I had a discussion, uh, uh, in days past, in a very preliminary fashion, uh, as to what if, if the county were to come up with a scenario of borrowing fifty million? And I may say that fifty million dollars is not necessarily inconsistent with what we represent to the rating agencies back in nineteen. Back in nineteen, we told them that we may be borrowing in twenty-one about forty million dollars. But irregardless of that amount, if you were to do page seven, on page seven, fifty million dollars, uh, there's a, a blue column there right in the middle that shows you that if you were to borrow the fifty million, the, the tax rate, this is reflected on the third column from right to left, and is now highlighted in yellow. That, that tax rate for the INS of point zero four four seven five two, that's what you're currently collecting from taxpayers. If you were to borrow the fifty million and you were to do the refunding and restructuring, the tax rate will not go higher than the forty-four seven five two that you currently have in place. Now, you probably asked, how did you achieve that? Well, a lot of it has to do with how your savings account in this particular fund is performing. If you look at the second column from right to left, at the very top, it says four million seven nineteen. That was your savings account fund balance in 2019. We've yet to discuss this with Dale, uh, certainly as we go about, uh, preparing the final plan of finance.
Your reserve. Hold on, Noe, hold on, Brent, Brent's got a question. He's talking about the reserves.
I'm sorry, which column are you on? You said the second from.
Right to left, at the very top.
At the top, you'll see a debt service fund balance as of four million seven one nine.
Okay, so the estimated cumulative INS fund balance, is that the one you're asking, you're saying? Or is it, you're saying the debt service fund balance that you're on now? Okay, okay, and so you're saying, tell me again why you're saying that the rate will not go up at all to the taxpayer?
Uh, we, we anticipate that there are so many components that come into play when you set up the tax rate, as we all know. The tax rate is based on, on your net taxable asset value, which is the second column from left to right. So if you go from left to right at the second column in twenty-one or four twenty-one, we set up a tax rate, or you set up a tax rate, based on thirty-one-point-three-nine-eight billion dollars of property values. We made an assumption there that if, that property values go to thirty-two-point-four-nine-seven or three-and-a-half percent, you know, up, then that also impacts that four-point-four-seven-five-two. So conceivably, if you have a higher growth, similar to what you had in twenty-one, or if you have a collection rate higher than the ninety-eight percent, then that tax rate is affected one way or the other. What we've done for you is just take those numbers and represent to you that if, if in fact you come at three-and-a-half percent growth versus the previous year, you have collections of ninety-eight percent, then if you want to keep the tax rate at the same level of four-point-four-seven-five-two, then you would have to still get, in the case of twenty-two payment, about nine-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars. Now.
What if those things, what if those things don't, I'm sorry, what if those things don't happen?
What, what doesn't happen?
If they don't happen, that's why the fund balance is important. We, you know, it's important to know that, did I hear Dale, uh, barely heard you, Dale. What do you anticipate your fund balance to be for 2020?
Four million even.
Four.
Four million even?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, that plays into, you know, that plays into this plan in that if you don't, if you do end up at four million, then you have a higher risk of sacrificing that savings account like we did three years ago or two years ago, when we dropped to, to the, to, to the what, what was it, Dale? Below, below, I think we went in negative numbers.
Yeah, we were down to two million dollars at one time, or one, one-point-eight million. That's why we restructured the debt to get our, our money back where, where it needed to be. And we project at the end of this fiscal year that we should increase our fund balance because our, our, our revenue coming in is, is greater than our, our requirements.
So then, are, are you, so Dale, do you, I know it's all right. Do, do you think that it's realistic then to, um, look at this projection? And I don't know how long, if you've seen it before, right in this minute, too. But, um, do you think it's realistic to look at this projection and, and believe that based on what has been perpetuated today, that we would be able to borrow this fifty million and not increase our INS tax rate?
Well, like Noe was saying, if you look into the, the schedules he's showing you on, on the, uh, fourth column from the, from the right showing issuer contributions. If we use fund balance to lower the amount of requirements, which means that number can be used to adjust the, the debt service where there is no effect on it. And that's why Noe is saying if our debt service fund balance is significantly higher than it is now, and we expect it to go up next year, that those monies can be used to make sure that there is no taxing, taxing factor to this.
Doesn't affect our bond ratings or anything like that to use the fund balance in this particular fund balance? This isn't our general reserves, just to be clear.
Correct.
It's a different fund, but this doesn't affect those, and this isn't dipping in so that the public is clear. We're not dipping into the, the fund balance reserves. This is a fund balance on the debt service fund.
Correct. And Noe can correct me if I'm wrong, but, but most times when we had our, our, our bonding issuance, they, they, they liked that our, our fund balance is, is significantly as high as it is to help, may, may manage the, the costs that we have.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
And of course, all of this is predicated upon, um, the structure of refinance that we are encouraging, correct?
That's correct, man, yeah. So in fact, if you look at page six, the previous page.
Yeah, let's go there.
I ran a scenario where instead of fifty, let's do forty. If you look at the column at the bottom that is highlighted in yellow, you'll see how the fund balance there gets here with four million and six in total versus the previous column of six million and two. So what you have to take into account there, too, is that in 2020, this year that we're in, we're anticipating to hit about eight ninety-two. So the fund balance at the end of this year may go from the four million dollars to the three million and one. So you got to keep an eye pretty closely on how does collection ratio, uh, um, performs on taxes and how does, how do property values perform, too? Certainly, if property values do not increase at the levels that is increased in, in the recent past, then, you know, you're going to have, um, you're going to have a challenge in keeping the tax rate for this particular, uh, section of the total tax rate of four-point-four cents. It may have to be increased slightly, so.
Dale, just out of, just to, for clarity. Dale, just to, for clarity, the 2019 fund balance is 4.7, so under 2020?
Well, because of the new issue and the new balances we had to do, we had to use some interest costs of $600,000, that's why we're reducing.
Okay, so that's the explanation. I just want to make sure, because it says it's got a different indicator there than the 4 million.
Well, the 4 million was our fund balance at the beginning of last year, but because of the issuance that we had and stuff that we didn't already expect, we had to use expense of interest expense that lowered it down by 600,000.
That's correct, and the other, I think, big issue is, you know, what do you expect growth to be? And you'll see that we've always been incredibly conservative on our growth models. And I think there's, I think that it's not just reasonable. I think it's very, very attainable, the levels of growth. And remember, we're already there, right? So we're in January, so we're already evaluating for the following year. I mean, this is, I think we're going to hit this growth. I think, I mean, what do you think, Noe? I think these growth models are very conservative.
Well, they're meant to be conservative, Judge. I mean, I think, you know, if you put Dale and I on the same box, I think Dale and I would probably get into a little bit of a fight in that, I think maybe too conservative, he may not agree with that. And I will always defer to Dale, he's bigger than me, so.
Well, please continue, is that okay? We'll go back to where you got your presentation. We derailed you a little bit, but it's important.
Yeah.
We didn't want to go too far.
The big topic for the commissioners, you know, I think, interest in that we're still in discussion mode. I understand that you have, are going to be working with L A N, I believe, the same firm that helped you last time on the CIP.
Yeah.
I think as soon as we have that packet prepared by you and approved by the court, then we will have a formal presentation and authorization sought from you guys.
Correct. You know, Michael's here, but he probably is not the best barometer as Juan. But I don't know how quickly we're going to get that updated CIP, but it should be pretty quick. But our biggest issues, Noe, are ones that we've been discussing all morning, and that is, well, not all of the issues we've discussed, but, you know, we have Bob Hall here that is adding a complexity, or let's call it, you know, an added CIP burden to that which was already valued at over $100 million two years ago. So, you know, in many ways, we've done great with our first borrowing and with our energy savings performance contract. We've gotten a lot out of the way. But in the horizon, as was always contemplated, we had 40 million more, but then we got this little unwelcome guest called Hannah, and she's created a $10 million to $20 million burden for us. And so that's why it's so important for the refinance at this time. My other concern for the court, Noe, and I mentioned this to you in our call, is that the exterior envelope of our building is a project that needs to go forward. So we're going to use all of our remaining money to achieve that contract because it goes stale after, what, 60 days? And so we went through that whole RFP process. You know, we have a good bid, we have a company we really believe is an expert in the field. We don't want to lose out. So we wouldn't be in such a jam, but the exterior of the building needs to move forward. And that's why the last six, seven million that we had in CO 2019 is gone, because we're going to commit it, you know.
How much is the exterior, Judge?
The exterior is, gosh, I wish Juan were here. I feel like it's 6.9, but Michael's about to give it to me. 6.8, 6.9, somewhere around there, Michael?
I guess, you know, if, in fact, you press for time, and I will defer this to Dale, because we've done this in the past, you know, we can always have that reimbursement resolution put in place so that you can promise to yourself that when we sell the 40 or 50 or whatever amount you'll decide, that for those proceeds, you can reimburse the general fund balance. I think the fund balance in the general fund continues to perform or outperform your expectations.
Yes.
And I think that that's to be commended, so, you know, you can use fund balance so that you won't lose those contracts that you feel are pretty attractive contracts, while we're preparing in a very methodical way to do what I, to do what I think is needed for a double A credit like you are, and that is to put that CIP in place, reaffirm the representations that were made back in 2019 that you're pretty much in line with what you did then, so. But again, it's something that, you know, in discussing, we can read that back to you at the next meeting if you want to do, to go ahead and spend that money.
Michael is going to give us an update.
That figure is $6,672,876.
So 6.7 plus engineering costs, so really getting close to that 7 mil. So anyway, Noe, so what else do you want to highlight here for us?
I think other than that, just page 12.
Page 12, okay, we'll move there.
Yeah.
Page 12, one more, there we go.
That's what interest rates are doing, been doing in the last 20 years. So you're in a good position to do what you need to do.
Right, yeah, we are in a great position. In fact, we thought we had a heck of a rate last time. Shoot, we're going to beat it. I noticed on the refinance, you guesstimated it, are you okay? Could we get some water, please, for the?
You were saying, I'm sorry?
I was saying that the, that the estimates, yeah, the estimates of refinance was 1.2. Is that conservative? I thought we had a little bit higher expectations.
The TIC we're running on page seven is 1.35.
Okay, I knew it was a little higher than 1.2, okay. All right, commissioners, this is your time to ask questions based upon the presentation that you have. Noe's always so good about taking your calls and getting, you know, a little bit more detailed with you about this. But it's very much ripe to consider our plan of refinance. We need to take advantage of these historic low interest rates. We also have a great need with Bob Hall here, with our medical examiner's office, and with other projects that are getting, having to be put in the back burner that should have not been put in the back burner, but we, of course, have these disasters to contend with. And so I would ask that, that Noe, you know, get direction from us. PowerPoint, you should run scenarios from 40 to 50 and see how we can keep that INS tax rate at that .044725, or is it 275? Yeah, sorry, 752, a little backwards there in the numbers. Let's see, you know, that's the name of the game. How can we do what we need to do to help the citizens of our community and help our infrastructure continue in its positive direction while keeping our tax rate low? Answer, we'll have to refinance, which is smart because interest rates are low, and we have a very good model of growth that's conservative enough to help us project. And of course, what makes all of it happen is that we have reserves that we will have to utilize and watch very closely so that we balance carefully the need to make the payments with the need to preserve, not go negative on those reserves. Noe, any, what do you think about that as a, I would call it a summary?
That's fine, great.
I got a question. Thank you, Noe, for the report, appreciate it, but I got a question for Dale. Dale, what's our general fund balance right now, what is it?
Balance at the end of last year was 22 million, and then we're estimating, we're finalizing our numbers now. We'll be closer anywhere between 24 to 25 in our general fund.
General fund?
Yes.
And is that the reserve?
That's our reserves, yes. But that's not debt service, that's the general fund. Debt service has its own reserves.
And that 25 million?
What's the debt service?
Right now is 4 million, a little more than 4 million, but right at 4.0 something, so.
So we go to, say we say at 23, 24 in the general fund balance, we actually looking at 20, right?
No.
If we're going to do our debt service?
They're two different funds.
I know, but you got to pay one, one you got to pay, right?
Well, the debt service has its own tax rate, and that's what we're saying, .044752 is the tax rate at the moment. As Noe has mentioned, every year, we have to go through the Senate Bill 2's tax calculations based on what our collections are for the year. This year might be a little lower because of the COVID activity, which means we might have to do an increase a little bit on the rate, but that's where our fund balance is so strong that we can use our debt service fund balance to make that no impact.
Okay, let me just ask another question, because if it's 22 or 23, whatever, how much actually do we owe, how much we owe in debt that's going to reduce that amount? I mean, I'd like to know, the numbers are good, but tell me also what do we owe? And what we, between now and six months from now? What do we owe, what do we have to pay?
You can go to page two, Commissioner, on the presentation.
Okay.
And there you'll see the total number of how much you owe as a county government to the various lending institutions or investors.
Give him the page number.
I'm in page two, but what category, what line?
The very first column, you'll see outstanding par. You'll see 142,866,080, that's the total amount of debt we owe for the county at the moment.
That we owe that much?
Yeah.
So think of, like, Evan, you have eight different loans, starting back to 2012, and most recent one back in 19. And those eight different loans have requirements from you to make payments over the next, 2021 to 2041, over the next 20 years. In fact, the last loan payment of 2041, it's, you know, it's about $700,000. That payment is being made to TaxDOT for a shed loan that we did back in 16. We are also looking at that loan at being paid off for savings to TaxDOT. We think, we're right now paying TaxDOT about a 3.5% rate, and we think we can get a 1.6, let's see, we think we could get a 2.3% rate, about $1 million for $9 million savings. But we're negotiating with them right now on whether that's even optimal or viable to refinance. But we're looking at all the options. But from your perspective, Commissioner Gonzalez, you owe 142 million. So if you borrowed, let's say, 40 or 50 million dollars this year, you will owe 142 plus the 50 or the 40, and you would also deduct the fact that you're making principal payments. If you look at that page two, on the very first bar on 20, in 2021, you have about $8 million of principal payments and about $6 million of interest payments in gray. So you take the 142 plus the 50, just to run that up, 192, minus eight, that will be, you know, 184. So basically, at the end of fiscal year, in 2021, you'll be $184 million. Now, who supports that? If you have $184 million of debt, you're supporting that by the TAV of the county. So you look at, on the same page two, on the right-hand side, there is a quadrant there called taxable assist value. And there's one says TAV, taxable assist value of $31.39 billion. So the rating agencies, the lending officers, literally, you can equate a rating analyst as a loan officer, they'll take that number of 184 and divide that into $31.39 billion, and you'll find what is called the debt to TAV ratio. And that number is going to be, you know, de minimis, maybe 6 tenths of a percent. So for county governments, if I were to, and I will provide you all at the next presentation, a list of where Nuñez County ranks in terms of debt. And, you know, the county of Nuñez is in a very, you know, formidable position in terms of that ratio of debt to TAV when you compare that to the top 25 counties in the state of Texas. So.
It was good to know that. Okay, now my, okay, my question, that's everything, we're talking right now strictly on things on loans that we have, right? Just the loans, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, now, I'm now asking a next question to Dale. Locally, not the loans, outside the loans, what debt do we have?
The only debt we have is the loans we're showing here. I don't think the county can go through a loan agreement without being a bonnie's.
And I want to be?
I'm sorry, Judge.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What I'm trying to see, find out, Dale, is I know we owe some money, right? And I know we owe the insurance, you know, we know other things that came up about, what, a month ago, and I haven't heard anything back on it. I know we owe money, I know we've lost some money or something, but my thing is, at the end of the year, we always come out, well, we need the money because we don't have enough money. So how does it go down that far if we don't know anything? I mean, what's our local general fund that we owe, an insurance, if there's any?
Well, insurance is not a loan, insurance is a normal expense for doing insurance.
That's exactly what I'm talking about, our normal expenses.
But it's in our, we have a balanced budget, so we have a budget that supports everything that we owe. So what's important, and I want to just make sure we correct it, because it's not like it's not exact, it's very exact. The fund balance that you asked, the very first question you asked, what is our fund balance? He gave you a fund balance from 2019. He's about to get reconciliation on what our 2020 is. But it's not like it's maybe 22 or 23, it's a particular number, and it's moving in a COVID year, a pandemic year, from 22 to almost 25, which is our operating 25, it's not quite 25% of our operating revenues, but it's close, but it's up from 17 million when I took office two years ago. So it's very clear that your general health of your county is strong. Now, any debt that we borrow only comes from the INS. So you can't mix the both, your general reserves are over here. All of this stuff on the paper comes from only one source, by law. You have to have an INS rate that supports this, and it has to have a certain adjustability. So, you know, this shows you, this particular slide that we're looking at shows you that in the previous administration, over 12 years, you borrowed about $100 million. We've borrowed 40 million. So you have $140 million worth of outstanding debt. What we're going to do is take advantage and leverage the interest rate market and help us get our next needs, our next 40 million, by refinancing, taking those savings, applying them early, playing around with the cash reserves, that that's what they're there for, so that we can, over 30 years, create a new loan profile for us. And the magic is, how do you do that and keep your same tax rate? And the answer is, Noe just showed us how we can do it. But the question I'm asking, Noe, is can you do it at 45 million? What is your floor and what's your ceiling? Can you do it at 40 million or 50 million? But when you say what do we owe, we owe everything that your budget is. We pay it, that's, we have, the revenue that we bring in from fees, fines, grants, and ad valorem all make up that revenue that then we spend. So for me, it's a little concerning, I don't want the audience to think when you say what do we owe insurance-wise, if you mean the health insurance, that's different. That also has its own fund balance, of which 2020 was a terrible year, which we wiped it out. And so there will be a need to refocus on how we replenish that fund balance because we're self-insured, but the health of your, of your.
Exactly, I'm talking about you, I'm glad you brought it up.
Yeah, well, we just needed a little clarification because I think insurance is just so.
How do we put it back?
Yeah, I think that's what you meant.
That's my question, how do we put it back? Because at the end of the year.
That's going to have to be a plan how we initiate this because it depends on where we're at. As the judge said, we were at a 1.7 million fund balance for our health insurance fund at the end of last fiscal year. At this fiscal year, we'll be lucky to be at 60,000, which means we've lost a million seven in value just because of a lot of issues coming up. Now, if we go through our cycle of this fiscal year and we don't have any large bill expenses, whoever it might be, whatever it might be, then we might be okay because the prior year, we had no large expenses. We had no large claims, so we were able to build the fund balance. This fiscal year, we had multiple large claims. If you have multiple large claims, as you know, with the county's responsible for $375,000 before stop-loss takes into effect. So you have a few of those come into effect, and we're only putting in right at about a million dollars a month in premiums from us and whoever else we put in. So we have to make sure that those costs are covered. And right now, like I said, we have a positive fund balance of 60 in the first two or three months. we, we have a positive fund balance of sixty, and the first two or three months, we're, we've been positive, we're still positive. So if it becomes negative, I'll have to come to y'all with a plan of how we bring this in, and most likely will have to be, we'll have to bill all the, all the people that, that have insurance, general fund, health insur, the road fund, the law library, the, everybody that has one, including our outside agencies that we, we find, to help us bring up a balance if we should need it.
And, and to that end, we had a great conversation, Michael, myself, and, and discussing how we can create savings. There's going to be, in the future, an R F P that's, that's issued. We're going to have an insurance committee, because there are ways that we can help ourselves, save money, and create an opportunity to bring a plan to you by, quite frankly, changing things up. And so that's probably imminent in the next two month, what, what's three, thirty days?
Three days, three days.
What? Three months, okay, so sorry, so I was already had it in two weeks, three months. The point is, is that we're already, we, we do have a plan of attack for that, but that is so different than your INS. When we're talking to Noe and we're asking about certificates of obligation.
Noe's always on top of things, man, Noe, I trust Noe.
No, he, he is.
Trust Noe with my car, Noe, not my life.
With your car? How, what does your car look like?
It looks good, good truck, got a good truck.
I have it.
So, so anyway, I just, I want you to know that, that that discussion is a great one to have. Preliminary, we've already set an insurance committee meeting, we've already had preliminary discussions about how to make the R F P. We're going to go out to the marketplace for more competition to create savings, so that when Dale brings a plan, it's a comprehensive one, but it's not anything we haven't considered. So, Noe, I think, are there any other questions from the other commissioners? We're going to move on, Noe, but I think that what you're hearing from the court is, thanks, thanks for the great presentation, and, and when you bring back the counties, unless something happened catastrophic, we're going to sit, quite frankly, quite low in debt and quite low in our tax rate. I think we are pretty middle of the road. We are neither a county that burdens their taxpayers. People confuse our tax rate with the county. The county is incredibly fiscally responsible and fiscally conservative as compared to our partners all over the state. Our overall tax rate that we collect as a trustee is a different matter, right? And we're always, you know, that's our school district, our county community college, and our, and our city, and our hospital district, so, but, but rest assured, when you bring those, that pro forma, we look good, we look really good, and that's where we want to stay.
Thank you, Judge. Take care yourselves.
Thank you. Thank you, Noe. So Tyner, on January twentieth, or the next court with, working with Noe, give us the agenda item that gets us to the next base. That was first base. Okay, number two was tabled already. Number three is discuss and consider purchase of emergency generators and related orders, and what we're going to do is just give you kind of a, excuse me, a background, so we can be readying our minds for, for where we're headed for generators. And Michael's going to start this process. Juan is also here, and again, it's, it's not really an action item, I don't believe today, I could be wrong, but no action today, Tyner, is that correct?
Yeah, I think we're just going to have a discussion.
Yeah, it's just a discussion.
But we're not going to get to the purchase.
Right, so we're getting everybody ready, so that this is a big one, and you need to kind of ease into it, so to speak, a lot of technical information that's needed.
So I'm going to try to address some procedural matters on this, and I'll let Juan speak to the technical side.
Sounds good.
So procedurally, the county had gone out for some grant monies that Maria had achieved for us, when we asked for one generator that I believe was a two-point-two-five mega, uh, megawatt, megawatt? Megawatt generator. And we received that award in December, but, but all through last summer and through the fall, there were some discussions going on about us needing two generators of a different size, two one-megawatt generators. And so in order to shift from the one to the two, and the, the two are going to be gas-powered generators versus the one was a diesel generator. And we've had preliminary discussions with the folks at, I believe, Cone Resnick and the grants side of things, that told us that the gas-powered generators are an acceptable generator for this grant. And so we've entered into some discussions with L A N, who's helping manage this project with us. They had a technical call earlier this week, actually, with the folks that are designing the generators for us. But this procedure, because it involves grant monies, requires us, when we hire an engineer, typically to R F Q that engineer. And then once the engineer's selected, they'll produce plans and specs for the generators, and then we'll put out a bid to purchase the generators. Is normally how that process would go. There, there are some other avenues that we're looking at, in terms of what meets those requirements of the grant, in terms of if, if we have an opportunity to use a buy board purchase, for example, which is typically a lot faster, because that bidding process has already been met, but we still have to submit to, through the T D M folks to make sure that we get that approval on our procurement method. And so that is also going along with this group that we've been speaking with about selling power back to the grid with those generators. And refresh my memory on that company. Resilience Energy. And so there's some multiple layers going on here, but in any case, I just want to re-inform the court that we're working closely with Maria. Any procurement methods that get proposed to my office will get submitted through the proper folks at Cone Resnick to make sure that it gets the proper blessing before we move forward. That way, we don't jeopardize getting the funds needed to take care of the purchase. And so with that, I'll leave it to Juan to talk about any technical aspects.
Just give him a chance to give it a good cleaning there for you. Thank you, by the way, for that.
Thank you, sir. Judge, Judge and Commissioners, and I think the main thing is just, on this is just the timeline, Judge.
That's all.
Pretty much. You know, with the selection of the engineers and, and having them prepare the plans and specifications for the, for the generators themselves, you know, that's something that we're looking at, and hopefully, we can expedite that process during the next few weeks.
Great, yeah, like anything, sometimes it catch, catches you really cold, when you see an item that's this big, comes up on an agenda. The purpose of today was to say, hey, look, courthouse generators for our, to power our courthouse and jail are not only needed, but quite frankly, you know, I wish we had them yesterday. So everything we're doing is in an op, is an opportunity to get the processes laid out and move forward, so that this next hurricane season comes and, and we're ready. In addition, we're working with T D M. If there is any more money out there in the world of generator money, we're going to go chase it, but we're excited that we escrowed four hundred thousand, which was our match.
We have six hundred thousand.
Sorry, six hundred thousand. We escrowed that early on, and it's sitting there waiting to help us make our, you know, required match for the grant that, that we are going to get. We're still going to need more dollars, and that's why it's a Texas two-step process. We're going to get the engineers to do the design, provide the specs, then we're going to come back to court and get a method of procurement to buy the generators in a competitive way. And then we're going to come back to you and say, okay, and here's how we're going to install them, here's how we're going to get energy savings from them, here's how we're going to get resilience, and here's how we're going to maintain them. And the good news is, is it'll probably take us a long time to get all to June, but in last year's budget, I specifically told Dale, hey, we've got to prepare for a maintenance agreement that would be somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and we put that money away. Now, by the time it really, it won't cost us that much in twenty twenty-one, because, well, we'll almost be at the end of our fiscal cycle when we get these generators running. But the point is, is that it's in our spending pattern now, and we'll be able to, we'll be able to utilize that. But you'll remember David Alareid, who, not David Alareid, that's the wrong David, I have that name in my mind. What's your friend, David Quinn, from Power Pool?
Yes.
Yeah, David Quinn from Power Pool. We're also working with Power Pool on the same endeavor to make sure that the resilience piece of it matches up with our ability to sell power to the grid. So it's, it's pretty exciting. I'll give you one more little tidbit, and that is, is that there's a lot of players involved with this, and that's because we're not trying to overcomplicate it, but we are trying to make sure that everything we do has an ability, if it can earn its keep, we want to try to find a way to earn its keep. It's no different than coastal parks. We want to build in a way that allows us to be self-sustaining. That's what the purpose of, of the new generator model will be. And also, we're moving away from diesel, because diesel's stinky and yucky, and natural gas is the way to go. It's cleaner fuel, and we have a natural gas abundancy in South Texas, and a resiliency that in the last sixty years, we've never had a natural gas stoppage at the city of Corpus Christi. So we're going to be using natural gas generators, and T D M likes that, and that's a departure from the original grant. It's also a departure from the original grant to use one two-megawatt generator when we can use two one-megawatts. Why is that good? Because it provides for redundancy. You don't use these generators all the time, but when you do, you want them to work. And so you also want to have a backup to your backup, because it's supplying power to your jail. And we've lived the nightmare of a Hurricane Harvey with no power, and we never want to live those days again. So there are many, this is a project that's had six months of, of turmoil and work, and we're getting close, and today is bringing it.
Jail and the annex, right?
It's all three.
All three.
Courthouse, jail, and annex.
That's correct.
That's correct. So I think that's, that's good. And A B M is involved, we're just not ready to, to, to bring that to court yet, so, okay. Can we move on, Tyner, to the M O U?
I just wanted to mention.
Yeah, go ahead.
J P Grom is on, just in case. Any questions on generators?
Yeah, so in order to make sure we're all honest brokers, J P Grom and Kyle LeBlanc have making, have been vetting all the specifications. Again, it's not like you just move in a piece of equipment and plug it in with some fuel and, and a reserve tank. It's, it's complex, and it also has a footprint, so we need to make sure that where we put these generators will, will be the right space, and J P and Kyle have been integral in making sure there is a double check for everything. And again, that's for the grants purposes, because it's a FEMA-driven grant through T D M, and it's also for our purposes here in court, to make sure that anything that, equipment-wise, is valued, engineered.
Thank you.
So, thank y'all. Okay, want to go to the A E P? Texas Memorandum of Understanding? I'm sorry, it's A E P Texas, M O U. I said that without the. I've got a motion to approve it in its form. Thank the county attorney for getting this to us. Is there any, is there a second? All second? Are there any discussion? We want to be smart, right? It's a smart city program. Okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Now we're going to move to coastal parks. This is somewhat of a feel-good, but it's also an informative, informative, and it has to do with debris removal. Scott, welcome.
Thank you. So this, this got on, Commissioners, I know the, the judge knows this, and, but this got on the agenda originally back in December, because I ran into a situation where I had these really giant, large Creosote timbers and beams that had washed up on the, on the beach south of Bob Hall Pier, and I didn't have the equipment or the mechanism that I thought I could get it taken care of expeditiously. I was concerned about public safety, people driving down. I'm talking things twenty-foot, twelve-by-twelve round, old, old, old Creosote beams. I was worried somebody was going to run into them, or, or worse, somebody would get them up and start a bonfire, and they're Class A carcinogenic, and the smoke would be toxic and everything, so anyhow. So I originally had talked to the judge about it, and I went and talked to Commissioner Chestney about it. They both agreed they would try to help, wanted me to put it on the agenda to, you know, inform the court of the, the money I was going to need to do this, that I didn't have in my budget, and, but I was able to come back, you know, I guess, what was it? Right before the holidays or after the holidays sometime, and inform everybody that we got, we just plugged away at it, and we got it taken care of. So I didn't have to ask you for any money. It's done. There's a little bit still staged in the park, because we throw it in roll-off dumpsters, and I can only put so much in a roll-off dumpster to where it's too heavy and they can't pick it up, so, but we got it done, so. I, I wasn't even going to bring it back to court, but.
Well, you make, it's because you, you're humble, and you make it sound so easy, but then the problem is, when we don't share all this hard work that we're doing after hours, Saturdays, Sundays, and, and the problems that come from disasters, then when we need resources and people don't give them to you, it's because they don't know, and that's why I have it on this agenda, is because they've got to know that every day, we're, we are dealing with two disasters, and this came from old Bob Hall Pier, probably.
Yeah, that's, that's the only thing I can figure. I, I measured the, the dimensions of it, and the crossbeams are exactly the same width as the current pier when they rebuilt that pier. The old wooden Bob Hall Pier got taken out back in, I think it was in the sixties, and that was when it was, some of y'all may remember, may have been around that time. That, that pier had two Ts on it, one in the middle and one at the end. And so, and it wasn't very high, I think it was only like eight or ten feet off the water, but, uh, that's the only thing I can possibly think of it could come from. I have, I've racked history to see what else could have been around there. There's not even anything down there Boca Chica that it would have come from, you know, with the tides, but anyhow, yeah, I, I see your point, Judge. I mean, we just do what we got to do.
I know, you're just do it well, that's the problem.
Because it was going to cost about twenty-three thousand dollars. I needed, I needed these big demo trucks and some front-end loaders to put them in there and haul it off, but.
Yeah.
And actually, ironically, there are some of the general public who decided to get pieces and haul off to their house, and so if you're listening out there, you got a,
Piece of history.
Yeah, piece of history, but it is a Class A carcinogenic Creosote pole, so be careful with it.
Right, that's the problem with the Creosote, it is carcinogenic, and that's why we had to take special care. Thank you, Scott. Take us to the next item. It's discuss and consider the adoption of temporary closing portion of the beach at Horace Caldwell Pier, but for a very good reason.
Yeah.
Tell us.
We're, we're following the same protocols that we always do under the Open Beaches Act, and under the judge's authority, under our doom protection authority, under the Doom Protection Act, to where she can close a section of beach off based on public safety or, you know, a public need issue. And so there's, you should have as backup in, in your agenda packet, a diagram that reflects the area to the north side of Bob Hall Pier that we're going to be closing off. I worked it out, it's with the contractors, hasn't affected the timeline on the project. Do not put up any type of fence or closing until we got this approved in court today. So they're going to start that next week, so we had that box checked. Everything's already been presented to the G L O, I'll update with them once we get this approved or with your order.
Yeah.
Belinda helped me draft the order, and so it's ready to go, and it'll be that way at the maximum till June sixth. Working with Scott Mears, we're looking at how we can reduce that footprint closure, that closure footprint as the concrete piles get driven and the concrete pad gets poured in place, you know, how can we reduce that? And we'll be evaluating that and reducing it as, as soon as we can, but we want those contractors to be able to move freely. It's going to have fencing around it.
Right.
With no public. And the picnic tables that were there, just for the public who are listening, the picnic tables, the little shade beach cabana tables that were there on the north side that would have been inside the closure, we have pulled out yesterday, and we'll be relocating them on the south side, so the public still has those, those elements, you know, that they can use. They like those picnic tables.
Yes, they do.
So.
And, and one more thing, and that is, is that we're going to make sure that we get all this information. Anytime we have any needs for public safety, it needs to be messaged, so that tourists who are coming down understand that that part of the beach needs to be secured off, and also our locals that use it every, every day or every weekend. So we'll be working with you on that.
And the signs, I know that.
Signage.
Yeah, the, the judge gave us an initiative in one of our department, Monday Department Home meetings, I think it was the very first one.
Yeah.
And that we, when we have projects, especially these capital improvement projects for all the precincts, we should have very professional-looking signs out there that really, architectural renderings that really tell the story of what we're doing. And so I have got a, a quote on those signs, there it is. I got a quote on those signs that I've got to get to after today, so it'll take me seven days to get them made, so I can have those up for y'all, but I'll, I'll give, let you and the commissioner look at the proof of it, because I need help with the copy.
Great.
And I think, leave that up there just for a second, if you don't mind, too. And I, and I think that, that it's really important for people to understand what we're doing out here, and, and I think what you said was really important, too, Scott, which is that you and Scott Mears are going to be constantly working to reduce the footprint of what is partitioned off, because obviously, that's a, a large chunk of very popular beach. of what is partitioned off because obviously that's a, a large chunk of very popular beach for us. And we want to make this as, as, uh, less invasive, especially as we, I'm really nervous about getting up on those summer months. So, obviously, the sooner that we can, actually, you know, it starts getting crazy spring break, but, uh, the sooner that we can, I don't know about in COVID, but, but the sooner that we can reduce the, the, uh, the footprint of, of the staging area, obviously the better. Um, but I think, again, as the judge said, this is for good reason. It is, is, there's no hidden agenda. There's no anything going on other than this is what the construction experts are telling us for this proposed building that we're going to be building for the contractors, that we need to make sure that we keep the public safe and, and keep, quite frankly, limit our liability, um, when we're building something. And, and it's not easy to build on, in a beach. You know, this isn't an easy build by any means because you're drilling, you know, cement and going down into, it's sand for Pete's sakes, right? Got to do it, got to do it right. So, um, this, this, but it's going to be, once it's done, it's going to be an awesome, exciting project. Um, um, we're, we're working on and we'll let the court know as soon as we get a date. We're working on a date, um, to do a groundbreaking out there for this building latter part of this month. That, that's coming soon. Uh, and then hopefully shortly thereafter, I don't know about shortly, but somewhat shortly thereafter, we'll do one also for the new park building that we'll be moving forward on as well. So, we, we've got some exciting things going on in coastal parks, uh, and some exciting projects, um, for all of Nueces County and for all of our citizens and, and visitors to be able to use. So, thank you very much for the update on that.
And then, and let me just point out one thing that, that, that reminded me when you said something about it, Commissioner. You'll see that you still, people will still have free access outside of the fencing on the beach side, the water side, which would be east, to go transition up and down the beach. There, there, there won't be, you know, they can still get to their beach right through there. They can walk south, walk north. That will not be a problem. And then you notice that little jog-in, uh, on the parking lot where we gated off, that's where the old RTA bus stop is. And so, we kept that open and serviceable too because the RTA runs a bus stop there. And y'all probably wouldn't believe this, but that bus stop runs twice a day year-round. They're, they're, they service that bus stop twice a day. I, I can't believe how busy that bus stop is, but anyhow.
And remember, we have dollars for that bus stop.
Well, I'm trying to work that out with Teresa.
Yeah, because there, there, there are dollars from CJ.
It looks like crap.
Yeah, because I gave two years' worth of CJ's money for that. So, I just want to make sure you work that out.
Okay.
And let me go back to the signage. It, the, the reason you want to spend on that signage is because we're a town a- and a community that relies on tourism as part of its revenue, right? Advolorum is how we continue to stay in business. And so, what you want to do is pay homage to what's coming so that people will be excited about continuing to say, wow, I want to live in a county where these exciting things are happening. They will continue to buy, uh, properties. They will buy, uh, homes. They will continue to come and stay in our hotels. And all of this makes a difference cumulatively down the road for us. So, we've got to let them know, and again, communication is everything. But everybody communicates by technology today. So, we will have this up on our website under coastal parks and we will hopefully get all of the renderings there so that anybody who's interested can come online and see all the exciting things that are happening. But if you just happen to be walking by and you didn't jump on our website or our Facebook, uh, then you would also have, uh, of information about this. And, um-
And we, we should be able to manage the traffic, uh, on, on the beach traffic there going north and south. Um, the commissioner did bring up one point. I'll tell you what, if this COVID stuff starts to wane, and like we hope it will, come March, April, oh my gosh, that beach is going to explode.
Yeah, of course it will. Yeah. And, and that's the name of the game, right? And so, um, we want to make sure that, um, it's all about public safety and around the park office as well. I know you'll be bringing us, uh, some areas that you will also carve off there, uh, to make sure people are safe. So-
Sorry, I don't mean to belabor it.
No, no, I think you did good. Are there any other questions regarding that schematic? Okay, great.
Great. As soon as you get the signed order, I'll get it up to GLO, Judge. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, and for the signed order, I believe we have, uh, Tyner and Belinda working on it with, uh, the CA. Okay, great. It's in there for me to sign?
No, I haven't.
You have it?
You can vote on it so I can pass it.
Let's, let's go ahead and get a motion then. Um, I'll have a motion to adopt the temporary closure of Horace Caldwell Pier for the purposes of public safety.
Up here, up here.
I'm sorry, I said pier. Purposes of, uh-
Portion of the beach.
Portion of the beach owned by Nueces County on North Padre Island for the purposes of the construction of our observation deck. All those, I mean, well, let me have some motion. I need a second. Okay, I heard a second. I'll take the motion and the second from Hernandez. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. And, um, Scott, just want to make sure, I don't want to keep you. Do you have anything else that we'll, we- You're good, right?
Well, we might want to pull it up first.
Let's do it. So that way you can, you can leave after that.
Man, that'd be great. Thank you, Judge.
You bet.
Come on, Scott, you don't like hanging out here with-
Item, yeah, item D three. Let me mark where we left off. And, and also, I, we did hear from the, uh, from Kevin Kishnik, and we're going to table the employee of the month until next, uh, meeting. So, I'll get a, a motion to table item.
So moved.
Thank you. Give me a second to tell you which item.
I one.
Thank you. I one, it's first page. I one and all those. And do I have a motion to table?
Come on.
And a second. You did it? Okay, sorry. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, we've got that housekeeping done. Now, uh, Michael, take us through the RFQ for engineering services for the rebuilding of the Bob Hall Pier project, the RFQ.
Right. So, on, uh, just before the end of the year, on December thirty, the court authorized me to go out for RFQ for the, um, engineering services for the rebuilding of Bob Hall Pier. And, uh, since last week, we've been working diligently with, uh, LAN and we've crafted already the scope of work, um, statements. Uh, I've given those to Scott to review. Uh, we've also, also in my office already have the skeleton of the full RFQ document. And that will be going to Maria today, uh, for review. And our hopes is that, uh, it meets with everyone's approval so that we can get that advertised starting next week.
Okay, super. So, um, this is, um, an update only.
Yes, it was just an update only. The court had asked me to-
Yes.
-to let y'all know what the progress was and-
And that's what this is all about.
Pretty good progress for about three working days.
Right.
Fully updated.
So, you're fully updated. So, Scott, how are you doing?
All right.
You got the, you got the twelve-hundred today. Yeah, so, okay, you concur.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're, we're, we're good. We're good. Um, uh, we're, we're moving along. My, my biggest thing is, is you're still trying to figure out, making sure we meet that March twenty-eighth, uh, submittal deadline.
You bet.
That, that is really, I'm really concerned about that.
I know you are. And I sure appreciate that. And also, your gym meeting back on, uh, Horace Caldwell. I appreciate the gym, the gym organization early on. Thank you, sir. Okay.
Tyner, can you put the air on, man?
So-
Hot in here.
It's hot in here?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, well, we, we have Public Works very close by, so. Thank you. So, that puts us, let me tell you what I'd like to do, commissioners, is I'd like to get us through the regular agenda and then I'd like to take a short lunch break so that you could get lunch and be back. And then we could maybe, um, finish, uh, those board appointments. So, let's move to item number seven. This is discuss and consider the approval of the final site selection as recommended by the Site Selection Committee for a new animal care services facility. You'll recall that we had a committee that was formed, uh, uh, previously. It consisted of members of the Animal Care Board, Juan Ramirez as our director, myself, Commissioner Vaughn at the time, and others. Tyner, I think was on there as well. And, um, so they have made a recommendation and Tyner's going to tell us all about it.
We actually have a presentation for y'all, um, from, uh, Kyle LeBlanc, who, uh, helped, uh, lead the committee in its decision-making process. And, uh, I'd like to turn it over to him.
Thank you.
Right. Thanks, Tyner. Thanks, Judge. Um, just to bring the court up to speed on where we are on the animal care facility, um, the county hired Shelter Planners of America back in May to produce a needs assessment study for the current facility and what a future facility might look like. And those activities ensued from May to September of 2020. And y'all received a presentation, um, in September for the findings, the draft findings of that report. And so, subsequently from that, as the judge mentioned, a site selection committee was formed and identified. And those are the members that were formally included during that October twenty-first Commissioners Court meeting. Um, so moving ahead in terms of the actual site selection process, uh, meetings were held on November ninth and December ninth of this past year to consider the three sites that were presented by Shelter Planners of America. So, those three sites, um, were identified as, over by the, uh, Bullweevil Eradication Foundation Building on county property. And all three of these, by the way, are county property sites. Uh, and then over at the fairgrounds. So, after those two meetings and that discussion, um, really robust discussion, really, really good conversation around which site would be the best, um, the Site Selection Committee identified site one based on visibility, accessibility, suitability for the facility and its function, a- as well as parking availability and the size of the site. So, based on those recommendations, um, what you see here on your screen is a rendering of that, kind of the blocked-out location of where this, uh, area might go at site selection one. So, uh, some of the text here on the screen is a little, uh, hard to see. This is an old, um, drawing of the actual location, which has been appended with the red and the, the blue or purple color there about where the site would lay out, where the facility would be located. And so, this is right along State Highway forty-four. So, it's great visibility for the animal shelter as opposed to where it's currently located in Robstown. Uh, but this is where the Site Selection Committee has recommended, uh, placing that new animal care facility.
Thank you, Kyle. And, um, one of the things that I remember about our capital improvement plan is that we actually ranked projects in an unbiased way. And then we allowed Commissioners Court to make their own prioritization. But in the world of engineering, you all ranked these, this one out of all our projects. Was it number one or top three? I can't recall. I just remember it being way up there.
Yes, it was one of the top projects as part of the CIP. So, identifying that originally in the CIP was, uh, more so of an expansion on the current, uh, location. However, the scope has grown since, uh, involving, involving Shelter Planners of America. So, that's still a, a decision point that needs to be made. In addition to where we've selected the site, uh, we'll still need to, uh, zero in on a building space program. That's what you see here on your screen is the last, one of the last action items to, to take care of before moving ahead with the actual procurement of design and moving forward with the design of the facility.
Right. So, just to be clear for the court, the first step is really just agreeing that this will be the site of our, of the future. And that is, uh, a discussing and consider the approval of the final site selection. Is that correct? I mean, that's, that's what I see here. So, why don't we-
That's correct, Judge.
So, if you, if you have any questions at this time, this would be a good time to, uh, to ask. But I would, I would move that, um, if there's, if there's nothing, just to accept the recommendation of the Site Selection Committee that the Old Nueces County Show Barn tract is illustrated in the PowerPoint that's been shown to us, be the final site selection for our new animal care service facilities sometime in the future.
So moved.
So, moved, okay. Motion and a second. I'll second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
And that's our property, right?
It is our property. We own it.
We're not buying nothing right now.
Yeah. And, and Tyner really did a good job vetting it. There was some really important things to make sure of. And, uh, we, we've done some nice, uh, due diligence on the tract itself. Isn't that correct?
Yes, and I'd like to go ahead and ask, uh, to get the authority listed on the agenda to actually authorize staff to approach the city of Robstown, um, just to make sure it's zoned as industrial. But we want to take it to City Council to get specific approval, uh, for a facility, uh, such as this at, at our property there.
Commissioner Hernandez, um, the county clerk is going to give you an opportunity if you want to. Uh, we just made a decision to discuss and consider approval of the final site selection for the animal care, uh, facility in Robstown. It's in Commissioner Modest's precinct, but it's just so close to your precinct as well. The committee was formed a year ago. We did a feasibility assessment. I think that's been provided to you. And, uh, all we're doing right now is saying we want to follow the recommendation of the committee and this will be the site when, if and when we, we get the funds to do that in the future.
Yes, and it's still in Robstown, like you said.
It's still in Robstown, yes. So, if, if the, I think the county clerk would like to know if you all want to add your votes in for this. The recommendation is-
Aye.
-to use this, to use this site at the Old Nueces County Show Barn. You got it?
Absolutely. I, I took a call from, uh, the superintendent, Dr. Moreno. So, that's why I broke away. Been waiting to hear back, um, on their thoughts. And they very much love the idea of having a synergy there.
Good.
And so, I even talked about seeing what we can do with some of my, uh, funding that I have to maybe help when we get that design built that we can match, maybe the outside of the facade to kind of match. So, it all kind of is more uniform. So, he's very much in, in favor of that. So, uh, we'll, we'll work closely.
That's great.
We'll make it work.
And so, Tyner was just about to ask you something about that. Tyner?
Yeah.
He wanted, you wanted direction to talk to Dr. Moreno?
Well, I, um, I actually, uh, wanted authority-
I'm sorry, the city.
-to, to approach, uh, City Council because we had the little zoning issue. It's zoned as industrial. But rather, rather than just making the judgment call, I actually want to go to City Council and get specific approval, uh, to build this facility there ultimately.
That sounds good. Let, let me know when you go. If I'm able, I'd like to attend also.
And I've been talking to JJ de la Sarva, our Veteran Services, um, Director. And we've also talked about, look, when you get a facility that really helps you not only become a no-kill shelter, but also focuses on adoption and fostering, you should also consider service animals as well. And so, we're going to be looking actively for veterans, um, groups that help. I know one in particular here in town where they train service animals, but they take them from shelters. And then they apply them to wounded warriors. And it's really an amazing program. And, uh, I've seen the power of service animals in my own family. And it's just, it's an incredible thing. So, just remember, our mantra here in Nueces County is if we build it, how can we leverage good things from it? Is it, is there a research component? Is there an educational component? Is there a safety component? And, and is there a service component? And this one actually meets quite a few of those. So, anxious to, uh, work with, uh, with all, all these collaborators. Okay, Kyle, what else we got here?
You need to authorize and make a-
We do. We need to authorize the city of Robstown. I'll make that motion to authorize Tyner to speak on our behalf to the city of Robstown on the zoning issue. Commissioner?
Aye.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, now, Commissioner?
Yeah, one thing, I just want to change my, uh, vote to an abstention because I don't oppose the site selection. I just don't, I want to, I don't think we ought to be doing it at all. But, so I don't-
But you don't oppose the site selection?
It's a good site. I just don't-
Okay. Can we make that change, please? Thank you, ma'am. And so, the third piece of it, is there a third piece, Kyle? Let me see, read it.
Yeah, so the next steps, um, as part of Shelter Planners of America's, um, uh, scope of work still is to lay out a site concept based on the site one selection. So, uh, as part, as part of their scope of work and, and a later court date, we'll bring back how that, uh, facility and the actual site will lay out at the Bullweevil location.
That's great.
And then from there, and then from there, we'll, we'll move forward with, um, further discussions about the actual building space program and the three options that were presented, um, as well as the actual site selection by Shelter Planners of America.
That's great. So, we look forward that, we look forward to that on an upcoming agenda. And, um, in addition, um, we will do a little bit of governmental affairs work as well and kind of go to the city of Bishop and Robstown and talk to them about this plan. Because if there's any way we can collateralize, um, this work with some of the work they're doing, that sure would be great, um, to be able to use our financial resources to build something that's, that's better for, for everybody.
You mean asking Bishop, you mean to-
That's what I mean. I was trying to skirt it, but yes.
Bishop has been like, ugh.
Yes. But if we take the burden away from them-
I really tried. I gave my, I gave my proposal. We take it over and, I mean, it's like-
Right. But maybe if-
We'll try it again.
We'll try it again. But maybe if they see this new plan, right? And there's only, what, twenty minutes between Bishop and, and this site? So, the idea here is that there's no way jurisdictionally to take city animals unless they acquiesce, you know? So, we, they So we, they don't have a good program, and they need help, and animals are just, it's a big.
We have an offer to provide a, a staff going out there to pick up dogs, you know?
Right. Also, Commissioner Gonzalez, you stepped out when we voted for the site selection. Would you want to add your?
I thought I voted for it.
I'm sorry, not for the site selection, for the authorization for Tyner to go speak to the city of Robstown on our behalf. Would you vote for that?
No.
All right. Okay. So, and Lisa's on the line. And Lisa, I want to thank you for all your hard work on this initiative, and not that this is the appropriate agenda item, but Lisa has made me aware of all of the animals over the holidays and really just since COVID-19 that have really just been dropped off, and that's the nicest word I can use. I think Lisa would use a much stronger word, dropped off to us without a home. And so these are the burdens of, of our community, and we need to have better programming, and that's what Lisa and her team have been working towards. But she needs a facility so that families would want to come that are attractive and easy to get to and have all the modern medical or veterinary facilities. It's all sort of a packaged deal to make sure that, that we are doing everything we can to promote adoption and fostering and not killing of animals. So I think, Lisa, I really, you opened my eyes. And so maybe not this time because it's not on the agenda, but on a next agenda. I think those, those, that really just puts a lot of justification in the room for why we need to do it the way we're doing it with Shelter Planners of America. Thank, thank you for that. The next item and the next, one, the next item is an HR item in a way, but it's an important one. It's discuss and consider the order to extend paid leave to county employees as originally provided under the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act. This act basically gave 80 hours, and Tyner's going to probably give us some background here, but the issue is that it expired under its own terms on December 30th, and most urban counties are extending for 90 days. We had Belinda really look hard about what other counties are doing. So basically, if you only used 40 hours in 2020, you, how, this would allow us by court order to have employees use the next 40 hours. And.
That's correct. And Julie's on, Judge.
And Julie's on. And, and the other thing I want to say is that this is not a budget issue. This is a net neutral issue for a budget. This just gives us the opportunity to help our county employees in the middle of a pandemic through no fault of their own who get exposed to COVID-19 and who need the opportunity to use these hours so they will not be penalized. Julie, would you like to add, please?
Yes, Judge. All I'm asking is that we allow employees to continue to take those 80 hours so that way we can control the spread of COVID within our, within the courthouse and our employees. This allows employees to stay at home if they are sick, and we're still able to pay them.
Thank you. I've got a motion on the floor and a second, and.
I have one, just one question.
And he's got a question. Here we go.
We're here, it says, I don't know, it says where asked, are we looking at the order, right?
Uh, yes.
It says where asked, it says on here on, into law on March the 18th, 2020, effective April 1, 2020. They're all 2020, and it ends in 31, so are we extending this to 21?
Till March, I'm sorry, till, what was it?
March 30th, March 31st of 2021.
When it says 20 here.
I'm sorry, it's some typo on the.
I'll get it corrected right away.
Thank you.
Sure, then we pass them for 20.
Right. We pass it for the back. We'll, we'll correct, I'll make the motion subject to the correction of the typo.
There's another one. This is until January.
Okay.
What was the typo? I'm sorry?
Hold on.
2020, Julie, instead of 2021.
The clerk's helping us here for just a moment.
The one on the left side is.
Okay. It was only for 30 days on the work.
We're going to do it for 90 days, and let me get the corrected one for 90 days.
Right.
Okay?
It should have been till, till March 30th. So let's make the motion subject to March 30th. And so that's your motion?
A minute.
Okay. And the second concurs, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, the next one, and this is just.
Thank you.
Thank you for Commissioner Hernandez. We always have this one on the agenda. It's just always there. So if you see it every time, you'll know. And the reason is, is that we have a disaster finance policy, and it basically requires that we constantly reauthorize. It gives us a chance to take a look at what our overtime is incurred and gives us a chance to approve it if, if we desire, as it relates to a disaster. So I ask Dale the same question every time. Dale, do we have any overtime?
Yes, Your Honor. Through the period of time we were able to accommodate the people that submitted activity reports to us, we have a total of 32.95 hours and a total cost of $1,146.17 for the period of time up to now. So we're asking for that to be considered for approval, and then a, a direction for us to continue to monitor the COVID-19 for testing and for vaccination to continue.
Judge.
Yes, sir.
So Dale, who was that? Do you know?
There was two employees from, from our inland parks. That was Edward and Sylvester, the only two that are exempt. These are for exempt employees, only if they're not exempt, they're, they're covered regardless of this. This is just the exempt employees that have submitted time to us.
The reason why I ask is I knew the, I knew the answer.
You knew the answer, huh?
I knew the answer, and I just want to remind that.
Yeah.
You know, Edward and his assistant Sylvester are, Sly, are, are very active in this. I, I don't know when they sleep, Judge, like you and the others. I mean, they're, they're constantly busy. I was surprised Edward was there at the Fairgrounds yesterday on the IRT, because I know he's really stretched thin, but they along with a lot of others. I mean, I don't want to single them out.
No, you're right.
Because there's a lot of others who are doing this, but it's important that we recognize who's doing it, because Edward used to be a great asset here at every meeting, and now he's not here very often at all unless he really needs to, because he's out in the field.
That's right.
He's out doing the work. So we just got to remind ourselves, just because we don't see him, it's because he's out busy somewhere.
And as I mentioned, what we're doing, we're only telling you those that are the exempt employees. So there, there may be many employees that are working on it. These are the exempt employees.
We have a lot of his staff working.
And, and I will tell you that we backs, remember when I tell you that FedEx doesn't drop off till 10:30 in the morning? It means we can't start till about 11:30 in the morning. By the time we, we take out the refrigerated boxes and get them appropriately, you know, put in the right spot, so we're vaccinating into the night. So that is why you're seeing this overtime, and that goes back to all the complexities of, of logistics. So, okay, thank you for that background, Commissioner Modis and Dale. And so therefore, we do have overtime to consider. I take a motion to approve at this time. I've got a motion, and I'll second. I've got a second with Chesney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would also include continuing monitoring the, the, the activity from this point forward.
Okay.
Sure.
Is that fine with your motion? Okay, and fine with your second? Okay. It also continues every two weeks, so you're going to see this again and again. Okay, thank you for that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Just to make sure we got it in. Okay, that takes care of seven, eight, and nine. I told myself 12:30, yes.
Can I just mention one thing, Judge?
Yes, of course.
Just in, for the future, I don't know, we might want to consider or whatever, but I know that the city, the health department, you know, since they were putting all those hours overtime, they went to, those that actually were doing it most of the time, went through a different shift, like they worked Monday through, or Tuesday through Saturday. You know, so they're off, you're off two days, right? Saturday, you're off Saturday and Sunday, or.
Yeah.
You know, so it, so it wasn't, because it, because most of the time they were doing everything on Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so it kind of eliminated the overtime. But for some regular employees, there'd still be some overtime anyway. But I'm just saying something that maybe we want to look at the future and consider, look, you know, how, how is it going to help us, you know?
Well, Julie, if you're listening, you can help us with that endeavor.
Yeah, just look at it.
If you could look at, if there's any, if there's any, I would call it, opportunities to do shifts that, that would be helpful.
If they're really cheap, just change the days off.
That's what I was doing, yeah.
I, I have recommended that departments go to shifts. Some departments vary in size, so it's hard for some to do that, and yet still some other departments are trying to do that, but still knocking out quite a few employees at some times, so.
And now, Julie, I don't mean like shift for shifts, I'm just saying the days off, you know, instead of, they work Saturday, but they're off Monday, right?
To have a flex schedule.
Yeah, right.
And, and yes, I believe lots of employees are doing that, and I still think that there's still a handful of department heads that do work Saturdays and the five-day week as well.
Right. But that's what I'm saying, we just.
So it's, it's really hard to take a day off during the week.
It is.
And they, they, these department heads are still working on Saturdays also.
They can take a day off anytime.
Well, the, the issue is, is that there's childcare to consider, right? And there's, there's issues that, you know, just, it's a change.
But if you're home Monday, you can take care of your child. If you're Tuesday, you can take care of your child. And the weekends, you're there anyway, but you know what I'm saying? I, I know, I'm just, what you're saying.
I, I think it's worthy of exploration, and I think we're always looking for the best workforce and the best work, the way we can work, and it's, it's not a bad suggestion, and, and we're gonna, we will look at it. So that's great.
Judge with COVID, judge with COVID, it's just been hard to take a day off for any of us that are working.
Yeah, I mean.
On the emergency management team.
I know.
Those, those phone calls still continue to come in.
Yeah.
So even people that want to take a day off, it's not a day off for them.
Right. I mean, as, as I, as I tell everybody, there's no holidays in emergency management. I mean, we have no holidays. We worked Christmas, and we worked New Year's. And I mean, and we worked round the clock. I mean, it was just unfortunate, but that's when the vaccines came, that's when the crisis has come. In fact, you can almost guarantee if it's a holiday, we're going to have a crisis, because it's happened to us the entire year of 2020. Julie, thank you. We're gonna, I promised you we were going to end with Agenda Nine, but I'm going to sneak one more in, because Dr. Hilda Ramirez has been waiting this whole morning, and I would like to make sure that we finish with her. We'll take our break right after Dr. Ramirez's presentation. So please turn to, give me a second. Anyone want to remind me? Let's see, which number?
B1.
Thank you. It's right there, B1. I was looking further down the line. B1. Dr. Hilda, we welcome you, and you're going to talk to us about the CALE IDN agreement.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Noises County Commissioners and Judge Canales. I want to thank you for this opportunity to present on the Inclusive Development Network Initiative, and I want to congratulate Commissioner Robert Hernandez.
Thank you.
I want to thank you all for being partners on the Inclusive Development Network Initiative, and also for hosting the IDN, for short, through the last phase of the initiative. The initiative is a nationally grant-funded award program through the Council for Adult and Experiential Learning funded by J.P. Morgan Chase and the ECMC Foundation, and also supported by national experts, including the International Economic Development Council, Burning Glass Technologies, Avalanche Consulting, and Questsite Solutions that have provided us a lot of opportunities for training. And it was Corpus Christi and Noises County were selected among a competitive group of 35 applicants, and five were selected along with Cleveland, Ohio, Spokane, Washington, Pensacola, Florida, and Coedda, Oklahoma, which is the Cherokee Nation Northern Oklahoma. One of the reasons we were selected is because we're such great collaborators here in Noises County. We came in with, we have 14 great partners locally besides Noises County. Our partners are the city of Corpus Christi, Port Corpus Christi, Workforce Solutions of the Coastal Band, A&amp;M Corpus Christi, CCRDC, Delmar College, the Citizens for Education Excellence, United Corpus Christi Chamber of Commerce, YWCA, the Council for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, Coastal Band, West Oso ISD, HELP, and South Texas Economic Development Center. We started back in March. This was a project that was in three phases, and it was to work on meeting the demands of economic growth while reducing equity gaps in local workforce development. And the first phase was looking at our demographics for Noises County through Burning Glass, provided us data, and we also benchmarked across selected cities. The second phase was coming up with a strategic plan. The funding that they gave us was to visit each other's cities, and then funding was provided to be able to implement some of the strategies that we came up in the plan. We got to visit Spokane and Cleveland, and then in February, the other cities came and visited us in February, but that was generously sponsored by Port Corpus Christi. We hosted our convening at the Town Club, and we had a great reception at the Art Museum of South Texas, where Judge Canales welcomed the group, and they were even given the key to the city and were pinned with a courthouse pin. And that was symbolic for them opening up opportunities to bring some funding resources to us. Right after that, everything changed and everything went virtual because of the pandemic, and we finished out with doing everything else online. The project was supposed to end in September, but it got extended to December, so the final convening was on December 16th. You all received a second amendment to be able to use the funding that we have through the end of 2021 to continue with our core strategies. The goals in our strategic plan, we have four goals, and there are three and, or four core strategies under each goal. Goal number one is to meet the demands of economic growth by connecting identified target populations to well-paying jobs. Number, goal number two is finding ways to remove barriers, to activate women who are currently out of the workforce. Goal three is to leverage the expanding opportunities associated with the growing manufacturing, industrial, healthcare, and business sectors to further develop our local workforce and entrepreneurial ecosystem. And goal four, our high investment, long-term goal, is to establish an envisioned economic development, training, and skill community center, hopefully in an opportunity zone. So our target population is specifically women and Hispanics, and our problem statement is how can we connect target workers, specifically women and Hispanics employed in declining low-wage jobs to good jobs in which they are underrepresented? Further, what skill acquisition strategies can we take as a region to advance our local industry employment? Our stakeholders are our local employers, partners, policymakers, and state legislators. As we move forward, we, the core strategies that we're working on will be coming to you with a contract that we're trying to finalize to, we have an upscale coastal band website that is under development. It has been developed with in-kind services through Workforce Solutions of the Coastal Band and Delmar College, and we want to put some of the money from the grant towards that. It's got the target occupations, and it's fashioned after Upskill Houston, and this will be the go-to place for leading our population to find the jobs that are high-paying target jobs. The other initiative that we're doing, I trained and graduated from the Talent Pipeline Management Academy of Texas. I went through that training between March and August, and this was an initiative paid by the Federal Reserve Bank of Dallas through the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation, and it's to establish employer collaborative so they can tell us exactly what kind of employees they need and do demand planning, and so we can work with the providers, with Delmar Craft Training Center and A&amp;M Corpus Christi. And so the other thing that we're doing is trying to work with upskilling our, our population. And I just recently met with Ida Garza and Crystal Drillin to work with Noises County Public Library so we can partner together and provide some of the services. I know they've got some grants on the, on the grants. One of the opportunities that we need to share with leveraging resources is to provide the entrepreneurial ecosystem, is to be able to have the opportunity for small businesses. That's a viable option for women to be able, or our populations to be able to, be able to go into small business as a viable option for labor. Especially our, our biggest barriers that we see for women, and it's even more pronounced through COVID, is the need for childcare and also. And also now it's more pronounced, uh, the need for broadband.
Yeah.
Um, I'm available for questions, um.
I just wanna say that the work that you're doing is of a national scale proportion. In other words, this is, we, I don't think we recognize just how important it is to be selected, you know, in the country to do this. And then it just happened to coincide with a, just a monster economic disaster. And so we now literally have all the data. Typically you would have a disaster like this and then you would wanna go get a grant to do everything that Dr. Ramirez has done. So the fact that we had the grant at the right time to, you know, be able to address recovery in an economic way, to get people who really need, uh, jobs paired with the right type of, um, uh, communities is, is absolutely essential. And so consider it the greatest gift that we had when Dr. Hilda said, "County, will you help us with IDN and, uh, this, uh, this particular arena, which is women in the workforce, minority women in the workforce?" And everybody asks us all the time, "What does it take to truly recover?" It takes two things. It takes a skilled workforce and it takes jobs and marrying the two. And sometimes you have jobs and sometimes you have a skilled workforce, but you don't marry them well. And sometimes you just don't have the, the workforce that's trained. And so Dr. Ramirez and this group has been able to do all of the data collecting and all of the collaborations in order to bring us the data that will help drive the policies. And I just can't thank you enough. And I know that I saw Cindy Barretta Frost, I'm Cindy Barretta Frost, Cindy Barretta from Frost, who's a chairman of our NCDC. I know she's watching carefully the work that you're doing so that they can translate that into actionable items for our community, whether it's the Taipei, whether it's Lift Fund, whether it's CCREDC or NCDC. You can't act to go get more money or to ask people what to do if you don't have data. And that's what you've brought to us and it's, it's just tremendous. So I hope that, that people at least stop and take a pause, uh, of the importance of this work. And kind of for us, it's just an honor that we got to be the vehicle for you. We haven't done anything. You've done it all, but we got to be the vehicle, which I guess is doing an important, uh, service. But, uh, we hope that you will have the opportunity to apply for more grants because we're hopeful in the future that this work continues to whatever that next level that you see, uh, should be, Dr. Hilda.
Thank you so much. Uh, we have, um, the opportunity to apply for, uh, with talent finance. It's gonna be a pilot on finding new ways to apply for finances, for apprenticeships and for, uh, internships. And there's an RFP opportunity. And we've also gotten noticed by the Federal Reserve Bank of Dallas. They've asked for a needs assessment, uh, with regards to the upscale coastal ban and the IDN. So, uh, I probably need to, um, I would like to meet with each of the commissioners and with you, Judge Canales. And with Cindy Barretta so that we can brainstorm on giving, getting a response to that.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think Sam Sessler sits on the board of the bank, uh, the Federal Reserve Bank in Dallas, Cindy. Well, maybe you could do a little search for me. But, uh, I, I think that that sounds great. But again, I just wanna highlight, you know, JP Morgan, this little bank, you know? They are the sponsors of this. So as, as they say, everybody put attention to it because we gotta make sure that people understand, these are the kinds of themes that excellence brings. When we talk about going out aggressively for grants, working hard behind the scenes and, and achieving, you know, these types of, of monumental projects, it's just, you know, if it weren't for COVID, it would be on the front page of, of Texas Monthly, you know? So we're still, we'll still try to get you some recognition, Dr. Hilda. But anyway, today's presentation only, you don't need anything from us. But I should say that if it weren't for the county attorney's office, we wouldn't be able to have any of this work being done. They've done all the work by helping us, um, you know, create this agreement that allows you and Cale to work through this vehicle, uh, Noises County.
Excuse me, Judge, for my add some?
Absolutely.
I wanna congratulate you for this program that you're heading. I did see, uh, some of it on, on the news media, n- national, where they were employing people of all walks of life and, uh, they were upgrading their lifestyle. And also we've been, uh, kinda doing it here in Noises County. Uh, we've been, at least when I was here, we're giving people opportunity that were working in the custodial area. And some of our directors, I believe Ms. Kara Sand has a young lady that used to work with, uh, with a custodial and she's employed there at our office. So that's what we need. We need to give people the opportunity to, to, to make a, a grade up in their lives and, and have a good life with their families.
And also, or is this new round of grants paid internships, paid apprenticeships? The, the, the round of grant that you said you might be able to go after, is that for paid internships?
We're, we're exploring.
Okay.
Funding opportunities.
Okay, wonderful. Well, if there are any other, if there are no other questions, uh, Dr. Ramirez, we're very appreciative. And, uh, on the request to meet with us, just work through the administrative assistance. And I know that we will be, I know I'm happy to do that. So reach out to Maggie for my part and, um, thanks again. And, uh, we will be back in touch.
Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, um, it is twelve forty-eight. Let's try to come back at one fifteen and finish up. We're doing quite excellent. Uh, there's not too many more, uh, what I call major headers. Uh, we'll come back with public works and purchasing, some of which we've already taken into account and end with audit and human resources. We're off the record, gaveling a small recess at twelve forty-eight PM. And, uh, we do have lunch for you, commissioners. Test one. We are back on the record for the clerk's purposes at one thirty PM exactly. And we left off with public works, although I don't see public works here. But, uh, give them a chance to get here. Um, I'm actually trying to figure out, I really can't move until I get Juan and/or Michael. Is Julie on the line? I'll move to, uh.
Negative.
Negative, okay. I'm gonna move to Dale. Dale, you get to go, you do not have to be last this time. Let's do budget change order number six until we get some folks in the room.
These are actually very simple, uh, orders. Uh, we got budget change order number six for our current fiscal year. Uh, we're moving some stuff around for IT because of, uh, some, uh, miss, missing people and trying to dis, uh, to integrate the new laptops and amongst everybody. It requires some changes for that and they have funds available to do this. And then of course our inland parks where we talked about earlier that have a whole lot of overtime that we, we will be reimbursed, but we have to have, actually have the expense for it. So those are the two items for your, your suggested changes for our budget change order number six. I submit that for your approval.
Move passage.
Thank you so much. Uh, I'll go ahead and look for a second at this time. Second, thank you. And all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The next one's pretty easy on, uh, budget change order for Capital Project ninety-one. Y'all have already approved this when, uh, several courts backed it was actually on, uh, there was items on each agenda item paperwork. I just wanted to per, 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 uh, print this out for the clerk, for her to have a, a true copy of it. So this has already been approved. I just submitted this for your, uh, submission to the clerk.
Wonderful. Uh, I'll take a motion then for change order number ninety-one.
So moved.
And a second, please. Uh, thank you for that. Commissioner Hernandez, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, posthum sign. Okay, how about the capital, uh, change order number ninety-two?
I choose new for y'all. We have some, some items coming out of, uh, of some of our regular capital projects funds and then, uh, some of our CO funds. Uh, for our capital projects funds, we're, uh, needing the kitchen jail where the, uh, to be repaired. So we're moving some money out of, uh, some of our miscellaneous projects. And then one of our projects actually closed, we're moving the money, uh, or trying to close a, a project. So we're moving money from, uh, Commissioner Precinct two's, uh, balance to cover that cost. Uh, once we go into CO's, uh, two thousand and sixteen, again, we have some signage that we needed to, to do. And we worked with Commissioner Chesney on allocating those funds to cover that cost. And the last one is our two thousand and nineteen tax notes. And Teresa provides you a, a list of everything that's going through our tax notes. Uh, these are just some of our minor, minor changes. And most of these are, are county roads that we see on, on the list, uh, for County Road twenty-two, forty-nine, sixty-nine and other projects for it. Uh, the funds are there and I submit this for your, uh, approval. I'll be glad to answer any question you might have.
Okay, um, is there, are there any questions? I mean, I will make the motion for the approval and I'll look for a second. We can have discussion.
Second.
Second, and then is there any discussion? Um, I would definitely refer you to the CO, uh, tax notes of twenty nineteen just because it, it updates, you know, every time we have court. And so you will get to see where we are on our, um, encumbrances. Even though we haven't spent them, once we authorize a project, we, we go ahead and say, "Okay, that project in its entirety is now encumbered and this is the funding source for it." It really helps us keep, uh, a balancing act. What I really wanna point out is that we can say now that in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, uh, you have, we have all of these projects, I don't know, I didn't count them, but it is an impressive array of projects that this county has undertaken. When you consider we were in the middle of a pandemic, uh, this is, if you really wanna know what state of the county's gonna look like, it's gonna look like this paper. This is exciting. So, um, are there any questions for Dale? If not, um, we'll take a vote. All those in favor produce of, uh.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, these are, uh, projects are still pending or that are completed or both?
These, uh, that I'm submitting here are, are ones that are, are just beginning to be, to start it. So, uh, a lot of these, uh, there are some completed on this list that Teresa provides you. Uh, I can't tell you exactly which ones have been completed, but I know there's several of them that have, or, or the very first one, the Chiller's been, I know that's completed. I'm, I'm, I know the Bishop re-roofing for new commissary is, is done. Uh, so a lot of these, uh, don't actually have the actual expenses on here. It just shows you what the budget was. So I'll work with Teresa to make sure we all, uh, bring that up to, to level of which one has been actually completed and which one are in progress.
Maybe she can color code it for us.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Well, Teresa prepares this, Teresa prepares this, but I'll work with her to, to make sure which ones are completed.
Um, yeah, I can tell you that, um, that she would be the best person to give us that color code. But if you have any questions, I think I can answer, we can answer them. Um, almost everything that's pending probably is in like a design phase. Um, but for example, all those roads, we're about to award probably the last of them, so. But anyway, in other words, they're not completed yet, but again, we encumber it. So that way we say, "Hey, we're not gonna touch that money anymore. That road costs X. Just because you haven't finished it, we still wanna make sure those dollars are always there." Um, if there are no further questions.
Also, you, uh, I, I, you, you should have received your budget book. Uh, hopefully you, you, you appreciate the covers, uh, with our first attempt. And towards the back of it, you'll see the capital projects and you'll see which ones are, are considered budget, which the actual expenses are. And that, that will kinda give you an idea of, uh, which one are complete.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I just, I'm new here and I just wanna learn, what's the Hilltop? Uh, you want me to give you the number that I'm looking at?
The Hilltop Community Center facility?
Yes, sir.
Uh, where, we, we work in the process with, uh, Commissioner Vaughn on, uh, uh, design work and possibly of what we wanna do at the, at the Hilltop area, whether we wanna do, uh, modify or, or replace. I believe this is just the, the planning considerations for this facility. Uh, I, I'm sure, uh, some other ones will be able to assist you on, on working through that items. Uh, this is just the stuff that we wanna determine whether, cause it is a very old building. And it's, it's, it takes a large footprint, but it's, it's a very popular building.
It is.
And so, uh, there's some key items of what, what the court wants to do and, and on, on whether modification or replacement. I believe this is just to, to give you an idea of what's there and what can be done.
I just know that in the past few years, we spent quite a bit of money on it.
We spent one point four million with, uh, that building as well as Bill Bowling Building across the street to, for ADA. Uh, we've, that's been completed and that was, I believe that was in another CO project, we did that. So, uh, we have spent a lot and I know there was some roofing issues that, uh, maybe they may have been addressed. I'll, I'll leave that to Edward to tell you on that. But, uh, these are just the stuff where the building's old and some of it, it may be disproportionate of how to use it correctly, but that's up to, for the court to decide. And, and you need to work with, uh, the, the contractor we have or the engineer we have to determine what would be best use of the facility.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Juan's coming up next, so he can always, um, add to that. But I just wanna say that the number that you see here is for the encumbrance of the architectural contract. So the architectural contract, it was decided previously that we needed a new building, um, simply because it's over eighty years old. And, uh, the roof replacement was one point six million. So we said, "Hey, we could practically build a new building." Um, so we stopped the bleeding and we just did band-aids to protect the roof, but we did not expend the, the money that was needed for a new roof. And that's when we brought in, um, the court authorized David Richter to be the, um, the architect. But nothing's really been done other than say, uh, we're getting started.
So it's not a concrete deal and it's gonna be either demolished or whatever?
Uh, no, no, except for that, I think, I mean, well, let me, let me say it this way. I'd have to defer back to Tyner because the, the contract does contemplate engineering slash architectural services for a new building. But for example, whatever can be used, like, let's say the slab is great or let's say certain beams or you could say, "I'll gut it, but I'll leave this for an open patio." I mean, none of that has been decided yet. So it's, it's really gonna be probably your first big project that you work with David Richter on to help create the vision of the future. And public input is gonna be really important as well. And Juan can tell you what we've done, uh, to put the band-aids on. Um, but we do wanna share with you that it, it, uh, it can't Band-Aid forever cause it's just a Band-Aid.
Oh, that's understandable, but, uh, you know, it's like you said, it's a no building. And, you know, I've worked there myself.
You did.
I've been there. And it's a sturdy building, you know, it's been through a lot. And it's a whole lot, uh, in better shape than some other buildings. So I would like to, you know, revisit that and maybe try and save it as much as I can.
So Juan will meet with you and, and share with you. There's, there was, you know, definitely, um, some discussions about all of this. And, uh, I think Juan's gonna be your best bet here in the future.
Judge and Commissioner, uh, yes, Commissioner, we'll, we'll set up a meeting to, to sit down with you to discuss what we had discussed previously for the, for Hilltop Community Center. And also once we hired David Richter under contract, we can also sit down with him.
That's fine.
Also, Commissioner, I'll work with you on, because, uh, as, uh, uh, other commissioners, there, there are some projects within your precinct that, that, uh, we'll be working with. Uh, I believe the Hazel Basin Park is one of them. There's several issues on that and, and there's several projects other than in the two thousand and nineteen, there's several projects that we wanna do. And we'll make sure you get that list of what your projects are in your precinct.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Well, if there are no further questions with regards to, uh, the capital improvement plan and the budget change order number ninety-two, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, budget order change number ninety-two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna switch back to order. And Juan, thank you for, uh, being here. We've got some important projects. Uh, change order number one, speaking of change orders on the McKenzie Annex, this is the evidence storage room project. And I just will refer everybody that, um, you know what I'll have Teresa do besides color code is number it. So that way I can just say, go to number whatever. But the evidence, um, room was also a part of our capital improvement plan and it's on, I know it's here.
C one.
Number one.
You see it?
C one.
Number one.
Okay. No, but I'm saying, um, on this, on the capital improvement list. Okay, keep going, Juan, and I will find it on here.
Uh, Judge and Commissioners, uh, this, uh, Public Works is recommending approval of change order number one for the McKenzie Annex Evidence Storage Room. This is a no-cost change order. And, uh, it's just extending the contract time for an additional thirty days. Um, there's a backorder in some equipment, so we're recommending the thirty-day extension.
Okay, and we're, and I asked Juan, we're getting close, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
It'll be completed within thirty days.
And so it is on your capital improvement plan? The total was a hundred and two thousand dollars?
That's correct.
And you'll remember that we had a great presentation by the investigators of the SO's office talking about how important it was to have that evidence room, that we didn't have a way to, uh, contain wet evidence. And we had some really problems with the dehumidifier. This is gonna be a, a modern twenty twenty-one evidence room. And of course, I don't have to tell the county attorney how important the chain of custody is. So this was, this was key. And this came to us early enough to where we would, we were able to address it with the bond last year. So we're almost done with this project.
Yes, ma'am.
And so you just need more time, right?
Yes, ma'am. We're just recommending the additional thirty days.
I don't see a problem with that. Um, give us an update next court, see how we're doing.
We will, Judge.
Um, I'll, I'll move to approve.
Second.
And a second from Gonzalez.
To approve or just extend for?
I'm sorry, to extend the, the.
The change order number one.
The change order.
Yeah, I'm out.
The thirty days.
More money, no?
Thirty days.
For the thirty days, the change order, right?
No, no costing, no costing.
No cost, net neutral.
Correct.
Okay, net neutral.
Second.
Second, if no one else second.
All righty, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, Juan, the next one, the dune protection permit.
Okay, um, the-
It's the Episcopal Diocese.
Yes, ma'am, we're recommending, um, uh, recommending, uh, the approval of the dune permit for the, uh, Episcopal, uh, Episcopal Diocese of West Texas under the DPP 0720-01-2P. This is for some improvements for, uh, extending to the, uh, walkway, timber walkway to the existing walkway, and also to do like an outside timber for the chapel. So we're recommending approval.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you so much. Um, all, any discussion for Juan? Scott Cross mentioned this earlier, but we are the Dune Protection Permit Authority for our county, and that's why these flow through us here, they're super important. I have asked Juan and and Scott Cross to look in the future to our dune, uh, permits as far as how much we charge. I don't think we've raised these prices in 20 years, and they're way off kilter. So I'd like for you to bring that back whenever you can, I know there's, you've got a million things, but this one's important as we start a new year. Um, we can certainly get input from all the right folks, but, uh, it's really not correct or fair, uh, to, to be 20 years on, on back pricing.
According to Scott.
I know, I know you guys will, thank you.
I love the airport.
Yeah, yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next one, Juan?
Yes, uh, Judge, the next one is, um, Public Works is recommending approval of the Drainage Easement Agreement for King's Landing Subdivision in Precinct Four. Um, this is some improvements for approximately 52,000 linear feet of ditch improvements. Um, I know we brought the presentation back in court probably back in June timeframe. Uh, this, this ditch is, uh, receiving waters from the southern part of 43 and 59 and draining through the London ISD and then north towards, uh, uh, to the Oso Creek. So this is for, the ditch is from six feet to 15 feet wide on the bottom, and on the top, it's about a 50-foot wide ditch. So this is some, some big improvements out for this drainage ditch, and, uh, we're recommending, recommending the agreement.
And that's already our dish already? Is it already ours? Is that already ours already?
The, the, the agreement, the agreement is to, is, is that we're taking in the easement, Commissioner, and then we'll be back in court, uh, the following court to recommend to deed the easement back, or not back, to deed the easement to the city, so the city will take over the, the drainage easement.
We don't have to maintain.
Do we have an agreement?
We won't have to maintain, Commissioner. We're recommend-
Okay.
So we're recommending.
We'll move.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Okay, I'll, I'll do it, I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose same sign? Abstentions? Okay. Um, purchasing, um-
Judge, this is Julie.
Yes, ma'am.
Items, items number one and two under Human Resources.
Yes, ma'am.
Are Juan, are Juan Pimentel's, can you-
Yes, we'll-
Keep him there and let him explain?
We sure will, thank you.
Thank you.
We got him, captured. Okay. You know, Juan, uh, this one is really important. Um, it's purchasing, but it's also you two, so-
That is correct.
I'm going to let you start it off for us.
Okay, um, are you talking about number one, right, Judge?
Yes, I'm sorry, number one, about the courthouse improvements, the exterior wall.
Oh, that's, that's yours.
I was just trying to say that it's, you've been very involved as well.
Involved both of you guys.
You're both, you're both involved. But go ahead and Michael, I agree, it's more you.
Anything that has a shovel and a dirt wand involved.
Okay.
I'm sorry, thank you.
And the show's on the ground yet you're involved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Judge and Commissioners, um, we are come a long way to get to this point. Uh, started with the CIP project indicating that the exterior of the courthouse was of, of great importance to get repaired. Uh, we were in a position to put out bids, um, in this fall, and we, uh, received seven, uh, bids back on this, and in December, we met with, uh, LAN and the selection committee, uh, and folks from Richter Architects to review those bids, and what you have before you is a letter of recommendation from Richter Architects, uh, David Richter, uh, recommending award to Phoenix One Restoration and Construction Limited. Uh, on page two, you can see the breakdown of how the bids came in for the base bid, which is the, uh, repair to the exterior tile on the entire courthouse, and then the alternate bid was for the areas in between in the, where the windows are all at, where they're going to go and reseal the windows and power wash the side of the building. Uh, it would look funny to have brand-new tile on the outside and still have that black stuff dripping down from all the windows, so that was included as part of this. And, uh, this program was, uh, administered, this is our first competitive CO proposal, this was the county's first electronic bid. Uh, all the respondents provided their, uh, bid documents electronically. Um, LAN was instrumental in also conducting, uh, an evaluation survey, um, for each of the people that responded, um, and they received a score commensurate with those surveys. Uh, each of the selection committee members, uh, scored on their history and similar project experience and similar individual personnel project experience, and that speaks to the individuals that would be assigned to our project. And we found, uh, by and large, that Phoenix One Restoration is a very experienced company specializing in restoration of, of, uh, large-scale buildings, and they had the, uh, best price to go along with that experience, and so I recommend, along with Richter, to award to Phoenix One Restoration and Construction Limited in the total amount of $6,672,876.
So moved.
I've got a motion and a second, and any questions regarding this?
And just, Judge, this was all CIP funding, just to be clear for the record, this is our-
It is.
Right.
CO 2019 is our funding source.
Right.
I have a question, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Again, while I was-
Excuse me, sir, what is that noise?
That's the air. Y'all said it was hot.
Okay, sorry, just, you're going to have to talk loud because the air condition's really creating-
Again, I just want to mention, while I was employed here, we had this redone, we had the same problem, and I'm just asking, and it's been about maybe 10, 11 years ago. Uh, do they give you some kind of warranty, how long it'll last, or, you know?
Uh, Juan?
Yes, that he wants to talk about the warranty, just speak loudly because of the AC.
Uh, Judge and Commissioners, uh, under the contract, it's, it's, it's a one-year warranty from the contractor, and then, um, I know there's a warranty on the, this facade itself, so we can get that information for you, Commissioner.
Okay, I was just wondering, like I said, uh, we had it redone not too long ago, and it was, it's been about maybe 10, 11 years ago, and I see that we got the same problem, just wondering if that, you know?
Yes, sir, in this case, what we're doing is we're removing and replacing some of the, uh, there's spalled areas, the concrete that's coming off along with it, and what they're going to do is they're going to go ahead and rehab that part and put some, uh, grout and, uh, also attach that back to it, and then come back and reseal some of the joints, because you have, there's, there's pretty much, uh, um, the walls or the sections are, are a certain dimension, so in between those sections, they're also resealing some of those, some of those, uh, gaps.
Yeah.
And, uh, so that's going to get redone also, Commissioner.
Okay, now I was just wondering that, you know, and then they're going to match the same little blocks that we got.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and I just want to mention that this is really a result of, uh, a lot of Hurricane Harvey. You know, once you get water infiltration underneath that travertine, it loosens up, and it's really been responsible for so much of the mold and the water infiltration everywhere, so, uh, it was interesting when the architect came to us, I guess, in 2020, and we asked him, how important is this project? He said, it's urgent. He was really adamant about it, so this is a good, um, a good, uh, fix here for us. Okay, Michael, um, we've got a, a motion and a second, that was our discussion, you move recommendation, yes. All those in favor of, and let me read it, it's, it's an award, and it's number 3144-20 to Phoenix, um, I can't remember the last name of Phoenix. Phoenix Restoration. Thank you.
Phoenix Restoration and Construction.
Thank you, yeah, let's make sure we get it right. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, okay. Um, Michael's working, uh, his way back to the podium, we'll give him just a moment.
Okay, thank you again, Judge and Commissioners, this is, uh, to discuss an award RFP number 3141-20 for Disaster Recovery Management. Uh, it was cited during the summer, uh, that we had, uh, you know, dealing with COVID and then dealing with recovery from Hannah, uh, the county had hired some consultants under an emergency status to get them, uh, to help us with those recovery aspects, and it was determined that we would benefit from having a, a regular disaster recovery, um, company to assist the county in any future disasters. And so I was asked to go out to bid, uh, for RFP for these disaster recovery management services. We, uh, put out the bid and received six bid responders. The, uh, evaluation committee met and reviewed those submissions, and we have found, uh, in the scoring sheet you see there, that Hagerty Consulting Incorporated received the highest score, um, and that goes across, uh, experience, work performance, overall compliance with New Oasis County policies and procedures, and price. And attached, uh, to that report has the individual job titles that each company proposed to bring to bear, uh, in the event that we need to utilize them, with their rates, uh, that they charge per hour, uh, for those individuals. And so what I did in the chart was just tried to take a look at what it would take if we hired all those folks to work for us for a week, what would that cost us, and compare that across the companies. And then I noticed, and you'll notice, that each company had a different level of support that they proposed to give us. Uh, some had a pretty large organization, uh, others had a very small organization, um, and so to, to even out the playing field, I divided that total by the number of jobs they put to each job, and you'll see there's an average cost per individual per week, and Hagerty, uh, had the best price when it comes to average cost per person. So we're recommending, uh, award to Hagerty Consulting Incorporated. Uh, we feel that this company is best suited to supply the needs of the county in terms of, uh, recovery. They're the only firm in there, you'll notice, they have quite a few recovery specialists, uh, that they plan to give to us, and we have a little bit of experience with these folks, and some of the other groups were really, um, small and not as experienced, um, and that's, that's indicated by the scoring.
Thank you, Michael.
And, and so, a-again, what I'll say is the, the committee, and that committee consisted of the Judge Tyner, Maria, Melissa Minguea, Juan Pimentel, and myself, uh, all sat down and reviewed, uh, these proposals together, and the committee, um, signed off on this scoring, uh, that's before you, and the committee recommends award to Hagerty Consulting Incorporated.
And Michael, this one, this only kicks in if we need it, right?
Yes, sir.
There's not a fee associated with it or anything.
No, we, we don't-
It only kicks in in case of a hurricane or something like that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and basically-
Thank you.
This is a classic preposition contract.
Right, that's, I couldn't think of the term, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, I move, um, that we, uh, accept this, uh, award, RFP number 314120 to Hagerty. Their complete name is Hagerty-
Consulting Incorporated.
Incorporated. And I can just echo that if experience means anything, they have been just incredible to work with, uh, during COVID-19 and Hurricane Hannah, and I think Maria's on the line, and I'm not, you don't have to, Maria, but I think that you would echo it, that the sentiments of the, of the selection committee were overwhelmingly positive, um, you know, again-
Right, and so, and so when we're working on projects such as, you know, the rebuilding of the, uh, Bob Hall Pier, uh, we may need, uh, these folks to help us when we're writing those, um, recovery, uh, grants, when we need those monies, and so we wanted to have the best experts available to the county, uh, for the best price, and this is one, you know, not, not always does the price line up with the quality, but in this case it did.
And just so we're clear, Hagerty's already been doing work for us, but, but we had to go get them because we didn't have a preposition contract.
Correct.
This is just getting a preposition contract in place so that we don't have to go find someone on the run or-
So God forbid, we haven't, we have another event next year, uh, we'll already have a contract in place, and you won't be looking at a long RFP window, um, 60 more days before you could even talk to somebody.
Right, got it.
Any other questions for, for Michael? Okay, hearing none, um, I've got a motion, but I'm not sure, I heard the second, didn't get it. Thank you, Commissioner, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Michael, we didn't call them, they're not here or anything, correct, virtually?
No, I, I usually don't call-
You wait till afterwards.
Because it's a surprise until they show it.
Well, that's true.
How y'all are going to vote.
That's true, I just wanted to make sure if they were here that we would get them to say something.
Yeah, I thought I've known how the vote was going to go, but I've been surprised sometimes, so-
Okay, Michael-
They're, they're invited to come and pay attention any time.
I was going to say, do you want to, um, ask them maybe next time?
So that, I will invite them when we come to execute the contract, and that'll be on the next court.
That sounds great, okay, thank you so much.
Judge, you seconded your motion on Hagerty, did I?
Who seconded it? Uh, Commissioner Hernandez?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
They're trying to get it straight over here.
And then our next one, uh, Michael, sorry, but you've got one more.
Oh, we did it already.
Oh, that's right, we sure did, didn't we?
Yes.
We, we did it when we did the, um-
Get him out of here, we want to move.
Yeah, when Scott was here. Okay, uh, so we've gone through grants, public works purchasing, and we did auditor earlier, uh, human resources is, is next, and that's, uh, reclass on information switchboard operator, um, and all the associated pay groups, um, Mike, I mean Juan, you were nominated to discuss. This is an important, uh, aspect here of your work.
Uh, yes, Judge and Commissioners, uh, this is to, uh, Public Works is requesting or recommending to reclassify the information, um, switchboard operator to, to an additional maintenance, uh, worker. Uh, this maintenance worker would assist Bobby, uh, as a facility manager.
What number one?
Sir, I can't, I'm sorry, uh, this, this facility, um, manager would, I mean, this maintenance worker would, would assist, uh, Bobby and, and, and here at the, at the, as a facility man, manager.
One, that's what I'm asking.
I'm sorry, yes, F1, F1, my bad.
No, no, mine, I just-
Uh, uh, F1, I'm sorry, yeah. So, so this would, this would, uh, the mechanical, uh, maintenance worker, one would be under, under Bobby.
Any physical impact, Juan?
Was that, Commissioner?
Is there fiscal impact on this? Is there any-
Uh, not that I know, Commissioner.
No, no money, not costing-
Julie.
This is Julie, it's $761.
Very small impact, how much?
I'm sorry about that.
$761.
$762.
All right, thank you, got a motion and a second, Commissioner, would that be a second, Commissioner Gonzalez? Yes? Yes? Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm now-
Thank you for hoping, I can't see who's-
Yeah, I know, the mask makes it hard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. And then go ahead and go on to number two.
Uh, Judge and Commissioners, uh, we're requesting or recommending reclassifying the Public Works Project Coordinator to a Badging Coordinator and move the position to, uh, under the authority of the Sheriff's Department. And, uh, this person would be in charge of, of all the badging system, uh, not only for, for the employees here at the, at the county, but also for the, uh, for the judges and also for the, for the, um, attorneys. And we're recommending, uh.
And I know I read all the shift around, but I think the bottom line, there's no fiscal impact on this one either.
All, all we're doing, Commissioner, is moving the position from one general fund department to another general fund department, so there is no fiscal impact, same salary.
Is the sheriff on board with this? The Public Works Director's on board with this? Those are the two departments affected, correct?
Yes. That's correct.
But my question.
Yes, the sheriff.
You don't need, you don't need this position?
No, at this time, no, Commissioner. We're just gonna reclassify.
Okay. So you, uh, you're not gonna try to refill it later?
Uh, not, not, right now, Commissioner, we're, we're fine with the, with that position.
Yes, you don't need a butter.
Yes, sir.
All right.
So much.
I remind you.
Well, and every budget cycle's different. I mean, you know, we're gonna come up in budget and he's gonna get a chance. Um, you don't, you know.
I don't, I don't talk about judges, but come back too much somehow.
Oh, I agree with that. I agree with that. But we're gonna help you any way we can, you know. Everybody, everybody pitches in around here.
Yes, sir.
Um, thank you. Got a mo- motion. I think I've got a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move to let Julie handle a couple of these, but I think that number three is tabled based on what I heard this morning.
Number three's tabled.
All right.
Yes, that's correct.
But I'll, I'll take the motion.
Motion to table.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion and a second from Gonzalez. All those in favor, can we table two, to the twentieth on this?
That should be correct. That should be, that should be.
All right. Motion to table till January twentieth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, also, um, number four is a, Julie, is a juvenile position.
I, I believe that one needs to be tabled as well.
Okay.
Motion to table.
Also, that one also belongs to the DA's office, and I believe they need to get with the, with Dale to figure out the budgeting for that position also.
Motion to table.
Okay, motion to table till January twentieth, Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll take a second, please. Second. And, uh, we support these actions. We've talked about them, but let's get them all buttoned up perfectly, okay? Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then, uh, Julie, you were asked last go-round, uh, by Commissioners Court to help get information about our tuition reimbursement program, our student loan repayment, and you have some information for us today.
Yes. Um, I'd like to start with the tuition reimbursement program. That program has been in existence since May of two thousand and seven, and we've had approximately a hundred and eight people go through this program. Employees, of course. And as of right now, I think we've had about fifteen graduates that are recorded, that have completed the program or, we may not have put them through the program in its entirety. They may have picked up where they have, had left off before, but, um, we've helped that many people complete their degree. And so in, in, in that, we've had about five master's degrees completed, um, about another five bachelor's degrees completed, and about another five associate's degrees completed. Um, and on average, we help maybe five to ten people every semester with tuition at the college that they, of their choice that they wanna go to. And so it's costing us about twenty-five thousand dollars a year to assist these employees with this benefit that we've been providing. And I think it's a great program, and the employees that are requesting assistance, they're putting in great effort, and the majority of them are making the grade and doing their part to accomplish their goals. So I recommend that we continue to, to keep this program, and, um, I know the employees that are taking advantage of it are, are, are really happy about it. So it's a good program for Noises County employees.
And we're meeting the budget that we set forth?
Yes, we, we, we have set the budget around twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars for this, uh, particular event, and as Julie was saying, many, uh, qualified employees have, have used this, this to help them through their studies. A few of my staff have done this, uh, this was able to get one of my staff a, a master's degree, and the other one's working on the master's level, so it, it, it helps. Uh, it doesn't pay for everything. It, it's tuition only, which, uh, as y'all know, if you go to school, tuition's only a small portion of the cost, but it's, it's very helpful to all those employees that are able to use this program.
It's fantastic.
Yeah, tuition's good.
It's fantastic. Okay, are there any questions for Julie? There's no action needed, Commissioners. It's just information only. These are ways that we have made available to our employees additional, you know, uh, opportunities. That's the operative word of, of the year of two thousand and twenty-one is opportunity. So I'm very proud of it and thankful to this court for supporting it.
I think she may also have something on the student loan repayment.
Okay, let's, let's hear about that. Thank you, do.
The student loan program, um, we're still working, trying to get W-nines on those so we can get those lenders paid. Um, I know we've collected a few and we passed them on to payroll, so we have just a handful of employees ready to begin getting their portion of their student loans paid directly from their payroll, uh, from the payroll department, so.
Thank you.
It, it's, it's, it's in process. We're working with the auditor's office. Um, we've had to do some work on this, but, um, I think we're getting pretty close now and we're getting ready to get those first payments rolled out.
Okay. Um, thank you. Thank you. I know everybody will be relieved, you know, with regards to that.
That we put in our, our file, so it is a budget item. As Julie was saying, it's a little more complicated than, than tuition reimbursements cause gotta work with the federal loan banks and, uh, uh, by, uh, IRS laws, we have to have a W-nine from everybody we send money to, so, uh, we're working on getting that information and then, then how we do qualified payments.
Yeah, how do you, how do you know? I'm just saying, is there kind of an agreement you sign with the lender, with the banks or whatever they were, in reference, when you make the payment and they pay them full? How do you, how do you know that?
Well, the, uh, rule is that, and Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, on our, our agreement we have with the, the employee is that we're not responsible to make all your payments. We're not responsible to meet your contract, so it's still up to the employee to meet their requirements. We're just making payments to the, the bank that they tell us that the, the loan is for, and it's still up to the, to the employee to, to make their proper payments to, to qualify for the loan.
But they check back to the, to the loan company, right?
We send them money to the loan company.
And do they send anything back when saying this is paid in full?
That would have to go to the employee. The employee would, uh, tell us and that, they would be the one that, working with the, I'm sure, uh, Julie, when they sign up for this, that they, they get the qualification of what the loan is for, who's, who the lender is and who we're ma- making payments to, so.
Yes, that's part of the agreement, that we capture that information as to who the federal lender is, and the employ- it's the employee's responsibility to tell us when the loan has been paid in full, so we can stop making those payments.
But what if he doesn't?
Then that's something, well, we need to work with the county attorney and make sure if there's any, any, if, if it's a violation of the contract they signed for, for loan repayments and they're, that they should be qualified for us to, to file suit against them to recover costs, recover, recover payments.
Have you taken out the paycheck? Is it still with us?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we, we look at all ends and make sure we got everything that we can.
And there's still, there's still requirements similar to our, our tuition reimbursements, that they must maintain employment for a certain period of time after the payment to make sure they qualify for it, and if they don't do that, then they're required to pay it back as well.
How long, and how long is the employment, uh, two years?
Uh, for, for tuition, I think it's two years. Uh, Julie, what is the, the, uh, uh, requirements for the loan payment? Is that one or two years?
This will be two years also, the retention for, for both programs is two years.
After the payment.
Okay, and what you're saying is that they leave within a year, they gotta pay back the money?
Exactly.
Make sure they understand that one, man.
We've, we have, actually, we've had employees that had to, had to reimburse us for the costs that they left before their, it was a tuition reimbursement that they had to repay us because of, they left before the two years, and we've recovered cost.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure everything's real clear to them what it goes to be.
It's very clear in the documentation that they sign, where they sign the, the, the forms with the, with HR to, to get either tuition reimbursement or student loan repayments.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. So, again, no action needed. Uh, before we go into executive session, I'm gonna take us back. We, we've got one loose end, and that was our, those are our board's appointments, and,
Well, I'm sorry. Um, Judge, on the, uh, hold on, let me get there. On the, uh, Noises County Park Board Coastal Parks Commissioner and the Ad Hoc Committee.
Would you name the item? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It's, uh, J, Board Appointments, one and two. I would like to make a motion to table that to the next meeting. We've just got a couple more things we need to work out on that, please.
All righty. Okay, I'll take a motion. I've got that motion to table and, and I'll take a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye to January twentieth.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then, uh, we also have a potential table on the, uh, item, um, J, um, Commissioner, forgive me. What number?
Yeah, Judge, uh, J three.
J three, thank you.
Sunset Water Authority.
Thank you.
We only have one applicant for Driscoll, and I'd like to see about reopening. I think there's some, some potential, um, uh, opportunities we can have to really have a, a, a good discussion, you know, based on two or three or several applicants. Also give us a chance to, uh, to find someone in Bishop. I know there's still that vacancy there, and that will finally make us complete, but if we can get that all done in time, but by the next meeting, then, uh, I guarantee you, it, there will be a vote and we'll, we'll be able to move forward on it.
If, if you wanna go ahead and give us authority to post that immediately, we've done that in the past.
That would be my motion then?
Okay?
Yes.
I'll second, I'll second your motion. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. So for the clerk's purposes, kind of twofold. It's, you know, it's the table till January twentieth and it's the opening of the, of the posting. And so just for the audience, we need somebody from Bishop, correct? So we need a member from Bishop, Commissioner.
Bishop and Bishop.
Yeah. And.
So Commissioner, can we post that for, um, uh, one week or ten days in order to get it back?
Whatever works, so we can post it in time for the next meeting.
For January twentieth. Okay, we'll do it. We'll get it posted today.
Thank you.
Okay. And, um, Commissioner Chesney, did you, when you did your table, did you do one and two?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, just wanna double check. You got two for the clerk. And then on four, let me say that we don't have to table that one. Uh, it's just an announcement, and I'm announcing today that, uh, on our industrial commission for Noises County, which is also known as the NCDC, I make the appointment pursuant to chapter three eighty-one of the Texas Local Government Code, Christina Hunter, uh, Fi- I believe it's Faya is her married name. Faya?
How to pronounce it? I wish I could.
Okay, hold on, I need to look it up. I better get that right.
By, by, mm, D I.
If she's, if she's like, um, um, me, her dad says, all you need to do is remember Hunter.
Yeah, exactly.
My dad says, all you need to do is remember Canales. But, uh, but anyway, she, uh, she's an amazing young leader in our community, and I know her through the Young Business Professionals, and I can't wait to work with her here at Noises County.
Judge, it's V I L L E D A. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce that.
Say it one more time?
V I L L E D A.
V Ida.
V Ida.
Okay, beautiful last name. Christina Hunter V Ida, and we look forward to her. We're gonna be in contact with her to get her oriented and, um, and get her a full debrief from Holden Hopkins, who's on the, who's on the line. So Holden, uh, please help me welcome Christina Hunter. By the way, we have places, and so for the clerk, is someone remembered? There's a place that this, in other words, each member, in order to stagger your terms, has a number. Uh, does anyone know which number this one is? I feel like it's pla- let me, let me look at my, my, Holden, do you remember?
And Judge, you probably didn't know this.
Um, I, I have here that it's either gonna be placed six or eight, um, but I don't have the clarity on which one.
Getting back to Tyner and Kara, we'll, we'll make that amendment. Please get back to us. It matters because of how they cycle on and off and also who they replace. And, uh, and so that's, that's important.
Judge, and you, you may have not have known this, and if you had, you probably wouldn't have picked her. I'm kidding, of course, but Christina's my goddaughter, so.
I did not know that.
I'm very appreciative of, uh, the fact that you pointed her to that position, and I didn't vote on that, so I didn't have any conflict, but.
Okay, that's great. I did not know. That makes you old.
That does make me old.
Uh, no, that's great. And, and, and just.
It's no vote.
I just made, um.
No vote.
I made a commitment to the Young Business Professionals that I would make sure that they also had opportunities to serve on really significant boards, and so, um, it's just been a great opportunity to, to cycle, uh, folks on from there. And guess what? They leave us and they go on to other boards. And so I think that that's really important, and I thank everybody for their service, but I really am trying to rotate Young Business Professionals for experience, for networking, and for their contributions that they can make. So, thank you for that. At this time, I'm gonna move us to executive session. Commissioners, there's only one item for the clerk. I don't think it's gonna take long at all. One item, please, and then we will be, uh, moving towards adjournments in memory. First, let me say that I'm giving notice that Commissioners Court is electing to go into executive session as authorized by provisions of the Open Meetings Act, chapter five, five, one of the Texas Government Code. Uh, we are doing so and publicly announcing by myself as the presiding officer in accordance with authority of the Government Code, Texas, uh, Code, Section five, five, one, oh, seven, one, oh, seven, two, oh, seven, three, oh, seven, four, seven, five, seven, six, eight, six, and eight, seven. We're gonna do this to consult with our attorney, including matters, um, but not limited to, uh, litigation regarding real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, termination, county advisory board, security devices, and economic development negotiations, or any other matter that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of our session, I will come back into Commissioners Court with my colleagues, and we will take any action as deemed appropriate on items discussed in executive session. The time is two eighteen PM. Gavelling us out, and please stay in the room, um, uh, but everybody else, please leave and allow us to use. Oops, sorry. Purposes, that's all. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We're back from executive session at 2:33 PM, back on the record. And we do have action on item number A on case number 220-CB00028. And I would ask if there is a motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion that the county settles an agreement of $300,000 where as plaintiff raised certain claim in the suit against released parties, style Armando Carrillo individually and as representative of the estate of Daniel Emilio Carrillo, deceased, and Alicia Carrillo versus Oliver Buendia, Marcos Lopez, Tomas Loqui, Jesús Galván, and José Rodríguez, an impendent in the United States District Court with the under-stick of Texas, Corpus Christi Division, case number 220-CV00028.
And you move that we have a settlement?
A settlement of $300,000.
Settlement of $300,000. And was there a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, and having had the opportunity to discuss and consult with our county attorney, all those in favor of accepting the settlement, release, and waiver agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, great. We will now move into adjournments in memory of. And Commissioner Hernandez, you've watched and witnessed before. We always ask Commissioners if they have anyone they want to honor at this time. So, I'll start over here and work my way over to you. Commissioner Chesney?
Judge, I have one.
Okay.
Chester G. Chet Nelson, who's nine years old, passed away on Thursday, December 10th, at his home. And he was a man who lived here in Corpus Christi for many, many years, worked in the oil and gas industry. And he was a really nice man, didn't know him super well, but certainly wanted to pass on the condolences to his family and those who cared about him. Chet Nelson.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Gonzalez, do you have any?
No, I just want to express, yeah, I have one. I want to express my condolences to Commissioner Matis for the loss of his family, grandfather.
Yeah.
And prayers for your family, Commissioner. Also, I have Carla Rodríguez, passed away on December 27, 2020, at the age of 90, at her home and surrounded by her family. She is survived by her 13 children, 53 grandchildren, 87 great-grandchildren, and 14 great-great-grandchildren. She was a God-fearing woman and a member of the Church of Christ. She loved gardening and spending time with her family. She will be dearly missed by everyone who knew her and loved her, and her prayers and condolences go out to the family.
What a great legacy.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. And Commissioner Hernandez, do you have any at this time?
Well, I just want to tell Commissioner Matis, give my condolences for his granddad. And I've been fortunate within my friends and my family. I have no one. We've been blessed.
Thank you so much, sir. I'm gonna yield the floor to you, Commissioner Matis.
Thank you, Judge. I'd like to share the passing of my grandfather, Edward Matis Jr. He was 93 years old. He celebrated his 93rd birthday in November, and he passed last Tuesday, November 29, 2020. He was born on November 23, 1927, to Eduardo Matis and Gabriela Yuriste Matis in Mathis, Texas. My grandfather, he joined the U.S. Army Air Corps in 1944, which is now, of course, the U.S. Air Force. And he was a Air Force firefighter. So, he was responsible for working on the planes as they came in for emergency landings or what have you. After he left the military, he married my grandmother, my dad's mom, Jesusa Suzie Cabasos. She passed away when dad was just 14. And so, my grandfather had the blessing of finding love again and married my grandmother, the only grandmother I ever knew, Adelfina Bruny. She, between the two of them, they had kind of a Brady Brunch family. They had six children altogether. That Sylvia and Ramon Canales, Dad and Mom, Rudy and Grace Matis, Christie Castillo, Dan and Virginia Matis, Rosemary, Dr. Richard Shepherd, and Eddie and Cory Matis, and Mary Elizabeth Matis. In proceeding, my grandfather in death was my Aunt Debbie and her husband, my Uncle Robert, who passed away within just a few years from right now. I thought my grandfather had impressed some numbers, 14 grandkids, but after hearing the other one, 31 great-grandchildren, though, and 10 great-great-grandchildren. I always said, when we go to family functions, I would meet new relatives. I didn't even know who they were or know their names because there were so many of them. But that's a blessing, right? That's a blessing to have a big family like that. My grandfather was a pastor for the last 50 years. He just retired last year. He was a Pentecostal pastor, and for, it was a Templo Maranatha Church, on Brownsville Road here in Corpus Christi. And so, myself and my cousins will be pallbearers, and his visitation starts shortly. So, I'll be leaving here quickly for that. And then, the funeral burial service will be tomorrow, and of course, there's a prayer service this evening. So, I just thank everyone for their prayers and their supports, their upholding of condolences. That makes it easier, bearable to be able to mourn, like I can function, which is not always something that's easy. But I just, I give that to God's grace and prayers that have been able to lift up me and my family. And so, I thank the court for recognizing also my grandfather's life with the order that you all signed earlier. And so, just a blessing to be with him the last several months, especially between my dad, a lot of the time, and a few other cousins who were there. We were on a rotation of every week, or every certain days, we would be there. And mine was usually Saturday nights, and I would spend the night and take my sleeping bag and go make sure that he was okay. And it was really a chance to catch up and hear more stories, and hear some of the same stories over and over. But those are blessings that I'll be able to carry for the rest of my life. One, to be able to have a grandfather up until the age of 48, but also to be able to share those stories and that family history with my children, and hopefully children beyond that as well. So, thank you.
Condolences.
What a beautiful life and an incredible legacy of which you are a part. And now, it makes perfect sense to me why it is that you pray so beautifully. I had no idea that he had been a pastor, so I, our deepest condolences. May you be comforted by the memories that you have shared with us today. Hearing no other adjournments in memory, I would like to adjourn at 2:41 PM. Thank you so much for the first court of our new year.